Good evening and welcome to the October 24th meeting of the Westford Select Board. This meeting is being recorded and we'll start as we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance, today led by Chief Chambers.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, with my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
First up, we have a few items for open forum we want to cover. Kristin?
Sure. On Saturday, November 11th, the Veteran Services Department would like to welcome you and have you attend, if you wish, an annual Veterans Day ceremony on the Town Common. Veterans who wish to march should assemble behind the library at 10:30 a.m. And if there's inclement weather, the ceremonies will be moved inside at the Old Center Fire Station at 51 Main Street. Next, the Sustainability Coordinator in the Town Manager's Office wanted to make a public announcement that the town's electric aggregation program has been renewed through November of 2025. You should be receiving a letter in the mail in the coming days to follow instructions. If you are a member of the POP Silver or POP Gold Program, you'll need to select a new program or you will automatically put back on Natural Grid's basic service. And then John, I will give you that last...
The MBTA Committee is going to be hosting an open forum Thursday, next Thursday, October, or this Thursday, October 26th, starting at 6:30 p.m. at the Stony Brook Middle School. And this is going to consist of a meeting in the auditorium where the consultant that we're using will explain a lot of the ins and outs of what we're doing. And then we're going to have breakout groups, probably three or four of them, and go to specific areas so that you have an opportunity to look at in more detail and also voice your opinions on maybe which way you think we ought to go. I think it's going to be a good evening to find out a bit more about this overlay district and things that we're considering.
Good. Thanks, John. Any other comments from the board for open forum? Anything from the public that's not related to the town meeting discussion that we're about to jump into for open forum tonight? Okay, great. Then we'll proceed to the special town meeting discussion that we're about to have. There's a few comments that we'll share upfront based on input we've already received, and then we'll open up for discussion with you. Thank you for being here tonight to discuss this with us. If you're outside and you're hearing my voice through the speakers, there's still a few seats left inside if you'd like to come join us. So first of all, on behalf of the town and my colleagues here, we'd like to just acknowledge that the experience that many people had trying to access the town meeting was unacceptable, and there's a lot we can do to fix it. We thank you for your feedback. We read every letter that you send in. We respond every letter in an organized manner, we hope. And here's just a collection of some of the things we've heard so far. Many voters were trapped in traffic gridlock approaching the meeting, and this was a serious obstacle to participation. In some cases, people saw the meeting time, start time, come and go while they were still in traffic, and they made the reasonable decision that maybe their opportunity to participate had passed. The parking options were not clearly communicated in advance and were a little bit confusing in real time. They were not adequately signed or lit in many cases. The IT setup between the two meeting rooms could be significantly improved so that everyone who attends the meeting has a similar meeting experience. The difference in voting options between the two rooms left open some room for concern. The handicap parking and check-in options were inadequate. And some of the potential, as I mentioned, some of the attendees who didn't understand that we're holding the meeting to try to maximize the ability to participate, saw that meeting time come and go and turn around and went home. And we understand that that happened and that in people's busy lives, that was maybe a reasonable decision for them to make. We are absolutely committed to addressing this, and there's lots of ways that we can do that. We commit that in our next meeting, we're going to have clearly communicated, well-staffed and well-lit traffic and parking strategy, well-designed and tested IT for conducting the meeting in two rooms so that everybody in both rooms can see and hear what's happening. Adequate electronic voting resources or clickers so that all voting happens using the same tools, improved handicapped accessibility and check-in options, and a well-communicated advanced strategy if attendance surge leads to a delay in the meeting's start time. We'll try to make sure everyone in advance knows that if they still see people checking in, if they still see people moving into the parking lot, we're going to do everything we can, as we did in this meeting, to hold the start time to maximize people's ability to participate. That's just some of the items that we've heard and just some of the planning that we're doing to make sure that the next meeting is a really fully accessible experience and that everyone in Westford who wants their voice to be heard has an opportunity to be heard. There were a few frequently asked questions that came up over and over again in your correspondence, and so we wanted to give Angela a chance to answer a few of those questions. Excuse me. And then Kristin has a few that she'd like to address, too. So Angela.
Thanks, Tom. I'll try to speak loudly, but if people can't hear me, please let me know. So probably the question I was asked most was why weren't we prepared for the 1,124 people that showed up? And the first question that I have to think about when it comes to planning for a town meeting is how many people do I think are going to attend? Lots of things are contingent on that, from how many tellers we need, to how many seats need to be on the floor, to how many clickers we need. So based on my knowledge of past meetings and what we had been seeing, as well as my attendance at the pre-town meeting meetings and evaluation of how many people were at those meetings, I thought that 800 was a good number. It's about twice what we've been seeing in the last 10 years, and even for an issue that had a lot of interest, I thought that that would be a good number. So we had 800 clickers. We were able to seat 800 people in the primary room. We thought we had 839 parking spaces, and I felt like that was a comfortable number. Nevertheless, we did have a contingency plan for overflow if that number was wrong, and the contingency plan was to use the auditorium, which was set up for audio and visual. I don't mean to imply that it was great, but I'm just trying to explain what our plan was. On the night of the meeting, right after what should have been the start time, it became apparent we were going to have more than 800 people there, and we started moving people into the PAC. The line of voters waiting to come in at that point was quite long and continued to get longer and go out the door and down to the parking lot in Westford Academy. I asked the voters to be patient and to agree to delay the start of the meeting so that people who were already in line could get in and check in so that they could participate. That was being monitored. The people going into the PAC was being monitored. The number of voters checking in was being monitored. All of this went on for about an hour until finally, everyone who was online was in the door. And at that point, with 1,125 people, 1,124, I believe, people sitting in front of me, a decision had to be made. Were we going to go forward with this meeting or not go forward with this meeting? And my decision was, for those people who got there and got in, and some of whom had been waiting for an hour and a half, who were ready to participate, that the meeting should go forward. And that was the decision that I made. Council tells me that the meeting was conducted according to law, that everything we did was appropriate according to Mass General laws, and that the meeting is valid. So I think that that in and of itself is some basis for what happened, but I do acknowledge that I don't want that to happen ever again, and that we definitely need to make some provisions into the future to ensure that we don't have those issues arise again.
Thank you, Angela. And Kristin, you had a few also?
Yes, thank you. And this is included in the frequently asked questions that the town issued on Friday, but just wanted to publicly state them as well for those of you who may have not have read that yet or may have questions. There's been several questions. Is it, can Article 9 specifically, and that's been the one that there's been most questions, be brought back to a future town meeting? And the answer is yes. Article 9 as it is today could be brought back to a town meeting in the future in two instances. One, if it comes back in its same form as it was presented last Monday evening, it must have a positive recommendation from the Planning Board after a full public hearing is held. Or it could come back in a different form after a Planning Board public hearing, whether or not the Planning Board votes to recommend it, if there are substantial changes to the article. An article could also come back to a town meeting if there is a citizen's petition that the voters sign and file with the town clerk's office to call a special town meeting and then file that citizen's petition. So there are several avenues for specifically a firearms bylaw to come back in front of the voters of Westford. The other question we are getting is, should Westford have an open town meeting form of government with its population exceeding almost 25,000 and the registered voters being over 17,000? Currently, the town of Westford has a special act that was in place according to 1989 that informs that there's a five-member Select Board, a town manager, and open town meeting government. If the town wishes to choose to go towards a representative town meeting form of government, or a council manager form of government, or another form of government, that would require a committee to be brought forward together to study those and then to file legislation, and a town meeting vote would be required to change the town meeting form of government. So I just wanted to address those two specific questions to the public this evening. So I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chair.
What is the timeline typically if a town does want to sort of put together a study, do the hard work investigating town meeting vote? I think it has to go to the legislature, then?
I would say a minimum of six months, probably more likely a year, depending on the process.
Okay. Thank you very much. So we're going to open up for comment first to the board and then to the public. We're going to have to have a hard stop on this discussion at 7:30. That's because there was a previously scheduled hearing. And when you schedule a hearing, a public hearing, you have to, it's a time-certain hearing. We have to convene the hearing at that time. If the conversation needs to continue, then we can discuss after amongst ourselves and look for another time we can put this back on the agenda if people feel like their voices haven't been heard and there's important things to share. So let me first ask if there's any comments or input from members of the board.
Could you give, given the time I brought here from the audience?
Great. So now we'll open up to the public. If you want to come to the mic, please give your name and your address. And it would be most helpful if you bring up new ideas, things that you haven't already heard, because we did receive a lot of correspondence, a lot of good input already. So please approach the mic.
This is for a shorter person?
No, you don't have to move it. It's for the...
Okay. It's just for the broadcast.
Barry Rosenberg, Rotten Road. "The October 16th meeting was not legitimate. Those who opposed the amendment called on out-of-towners to arrive early. Hundreds of residents could not park and denied access to the democratic process. Others who came may have gone home because the hallway was filled with people vocalizing outside political agendas and racial slurs. The democratic process was also aborted because someone voted twice on the same question, and protesters drowned out our chief of police. Accepting the results of October 16th encourages those who manipulate and intimidate to escalate their bullying behavior. It has already emboldened two members of the Planning Board. At a public meeting, one called a bylaw approved by 55% of the citizens a monstrosity," direct quote. "The other swore he would refuse to sit through another meeting with the Board of Health." "The October 16th meeting, which should have been postponed, should now be declared invalid and rescheduled. It alienated those who finally came to special town meeting and could not attend. It leaves many of us considering our next options, including litigation or a citizen's petition. It leaves many wondering if the town meeting form of government is a mistake for our community if this is the way it functions. And I am glad to hear you starting to address it. That was not part of this." Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And just for, I guess, just to respond to one point. So we did ask council if there's anything about the conduct of the meeting that would be grounds for declaring the meeting inadmissible, and he did not think there were. He thought that the meeting was convened and conducted in accordance with the law. So just for people...
I understand that. We shall agree to disagree.
Okay. Thank you. Yes.
Bob Jeffries, 11 Boston Road. And this is basically a parliamentary question for town moderator. The chief made a motion to reconsider. Was it seconded?
Yes.
And did discussion begin?
The motion to reconsider was seconded.
Can you guys talk louder, please?
The motion to reconsider was seconded. We had discussion, and I called for the vote.
Okay. The chief then made a motion to withdraw? Because only, only the person that made can withdraw.
The chief withdrew his motion, yes?
No. He made a motion to withdraw.
Okay.
According to town meeting time and as published on our website, that motion should have been voted on, and it never happened. So my point is, the motion to reconsider still stands.
Okay. Hi, welcome.
Jennifer Valandry, Almeria Circle. And I just have two key points, but first, thank you all for your contributions to...
Can you speak louder, please?
Thank you all for your contributions to democracy at a pretty wild and woolly town meeting. And I have really just two key points, one of which is, you mentioned that there was double voting, but we never heard an explanation of how and why that happened. So I'm just really curious about how he came to that conclusion. I was in the Performing Arts Center, and I did see during the vote that the chief suggested, a bunch of people, maybe about 20, coming into the PAC during that vote. So FYI on that one. And then another thing that I wanted to mention is that, consistent with Mass General law, the moderator does have the ability to give somebody a warning when they're being disruptive in a meeting. And then if that person continues to be disruptive, the moderator can have the police escort that person out. The town of Concord has very specific protocols around that, and I'm questioning what ours are. I don't need an explanation tonight, but I just wanted to raise the question. And the town of Concord's protocols are listed on the Mass website for town meetings, and the statute is Mass General Law 38 and 17.
Great. Thank you. So I understand your second point is really a comment for us to consider. Madam Moderator, would you like to address the first question?
Yes. Yes. So first of all, I'm afraid double voting was a poor choice of words on my part. What exactly happened was that as this lady who was speaking just a moment ago said, folks who were leaving the hall when they realized there was going to be another vote, moved into the PAC when they had been in the gym in the first place. They had handed in their clickers, some of them, and they were trying to vote without the clickers in the PAC. The assistant moderator in the PAC and the assistant clerk came to me and said, "We have no way of knowing if these folks have already voted or not with their clickers or in the gym." And that gave me a concern over the integrity of the vote. And as a result, I called that vote off. So that's, that's what happened with the double voting. I'm sorry I didn't explain that better at the time.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Just one word in the moderator's defense on the, on the issue of the shouting at the end. There was not one person. I mean, I was frankly, as a citizen, embarrassed at the number of people shouting. I don't think you could say, you know, "You sit down." There were probably 20 or 30 of them. And so I think we need to think in the future about, you know, just our own, not even this room, but just in general, decorum in a public meeting, we don't shut people down. And it makes it really hard for the moderator to say, "Please take care of that one person, because there's a lot more than one."
And we have talked about what are the things we can do to help emphasize and reinforce our shared group norms in those meetings, like listening respectfully, like, you know, following the protocol of the meeting. So we will be thinking about that and borrowing good ideas from other places that, you know, if there's a good idea out there of how we can reinforce and maintain that better, we'll certainly want to do that. Sure. Please come, please come up.
Chris Erickson, 41 Kaiser Road. "I have a quick question on the agenda. When we're putting together the agenda, and we know one topic is going to be controversial, it's going to need time, people are going to have questions, why do we put it at the end of the meeting when people are tired and ready to go home? I'd just like to ask if that could be considered for the future. Makes sense?"
I'll direct that to Madam Moderator.
So the zoning articles are, the Select Board actually sets the warrant and the, and the order of the articles?
Should that come back to me?
But zoning, zoning articles are traditionally at the end of the warrant. You know, this is maybe something to consider in the future if we know that something is going to be controversial to move it further towards. There are certain, certain items of business we need to get taken care of first, because sometimes people will come to vote on one issue and then leave. But there is a possibility of moving things up. It's not a bad idea.
Thanks. Especially if it's a nighttime meeting. Thanks.
Right. It's an excellent point. There is some precedent of reordering articles with that in mind, if there's a big attendance group that we want to make sure we capture.
Hi, my name is Sue Hanley, 26 Kersey Circle, Westford. I'm also on the Board of Health. I have a myriad of concerns about that meeting. Barry Rosenberg, thank you. I couldn't agree with you more. There were so many problems. One of the questions I have is, should we, going forward, make sure that people are showing IDs coming in? I was very uncomfortable with walking in with all the signs that seemed to be about gun rights, which had nothing to do with what was going on that night. I thought the vote was about putting a bylaw in place, and we seemed to get bogged down. So there were a lot of angry people standing in the lobby that I was very intimidated by. I got there at 6:30, so I was able to actually get a seat. But there were so many people and friends of mine that never could get in there. And so when it came to the vote, there were so many people who would have loved to have been part of the vote that couldn't be part of the vote because they never got in the door. So people that are from out of town, why would they have a right to be in our town meeting if they're not part of Westford? That's number one. And number two, should we now be making people show IDs coming in so that we make sure that anybody who's voting is legitimately able to vote? Because let's face it, it was a better system with the screens and all that. But if I knew my neighbor wasn't going to be there, couldn't I stand forward and say, "My name is so-and-so, and I live at such-and-such an address," and they would just look it up and check it off? What was the system to make sure that didn't happen?
I'm sorry. Are you directing that to Patty? Patty?
It's a Mass General law thing. We can't, you don't have to ask for ID. I agree with you. I would have no problem asking for an ID, but...
So how do we change that going forward?
Legislation in place at the state level says you do not have to request ID.
But do you understand why that could be a huge problem with people, especially with the, the volatile issue of this vote? That, I'm sorry, but like, I've lived in this town for a long time, and when I walked in, I was a little scared, quite honestly, because I could not believe the anger that was in front of me. And you know what? I'm on the Board of Health, and I dealt with it during the vaccination and the masking mandate. And I am so sad for what has happened to our town. We live in this incredibly beautiful town that we've, it's, I think, it's been idyllic until probably the last three years. That Monday night, I was scared for myself and for everybody else, and that is so sad to me. And I pray, going forward, that it doesn't happen that way.
Thank you. John?
Patty, you said, "We don't have to." Does it say we cannot?
It's a good question, but you're, you can be...
Well, isn't town meeting an open meeting? I mean, you cannot turn away any...
I'm not, I have no problem about people showing up, but they don't have a right to be intimidating us in the lobby, and they don't have a right to be maybe putting their names forward as somebody that they're not. How do we know if they're not?
Well, that's a good, I mean, that's a point that we discussed.
I think we understand the question and the point. So why don't we take that and... Yeah, Andrea?
I just, sort of one thing to think about and a suggestion. I know during elections, we require people who are holding signs to be, is it 250?
150 feet.
150 feet away. And so I'm wondering if one of the things we can think about is that the same thing for town meeting, if you are advocating for a particular position, whether you are in favor or against whatever it is, that you have to be 150 feet away from the entrance of the building.
I don't think it applies there, so I don't know if we can do it.
It may not, but we could create a, we could create a policy.
So we'll take the action item, and we've also talked about that before. How do we make sure we're really clear on who can be where and what they can say? We need to respect people's First Amendment rights, but we also have to make sure that we've got an orderly meeting. So excellent point and something that we'll look at either as a policy or some other way to at least make it very clear who's allowed to be where. Please, Dan.
Diane Wood, 122 Depot. Obviously, I'll echo what Sue just said. The worst meeting in the 40 years we've been in town, ever, ever, ever. And I think we all agree. Would like to move on from that. And as I understand the options, the meeting can be declared legally. I don't know if it can be, but people can look into whether or not the meeting could legally be considered null and void, or we bring it back, right? If we bring, if we bring it back, what I'm hearing, and Kristin, can you validate? Because there was rumors left and right about whose approval we needed, whose approval we didn't need. Could you go through that again? Do we need Planning Board approval? Because personally, I don't think that's going to happen.
Sure. So...
Based on last night's meeting that I attended.
So according to town council, the meeting was valid. It cannot be reopened. If one wants to bring back a firearms bylaw that is exactly the same as what was presented under Article 9, within two years or less, you would need a Planning Board favorable recommendation after a public hearing. If there were substantial changes to that article, you could bring it back within that two-year period or sooner, without a unanimous or majority support of the recommendation of the Planning Board.
So if there's a citizen's petition, for example, if it was substantially different than what just went forward before, or different in important ways, and we can try to give you guidance about how different it would need to be or what ways?
And I know Jeff is working on that.
Right. Or if the Planning Board wanted to recommend something of less...
So the Planning Board could propose something. There could be a citizen's petition. But there are several pathways to bring forward something that relates to the, to a firearms bylaw before the two-year mark.
So if the community wanted to move forward with a citizen's petition, they would not need Planning Board approval? Is that what I'm hearing?
If it is the same as what was brought back, was back on Monday, yes, you would need Planning Board recommend, a full recommendation from the Planning Board after a public hearing process.
Once we better understand what that, what it means to be different, right? Does the title change? Do five words change? Once we get a better handle on that and understood that, if it indeed was deemed to be different, citizen's petition could be brought forward without Planning Board approval?
You would need a Planning Board public hearing, and you would need a Planning Board recommendation. Whether that recommendation is favorable or not favorable, that would not matter.
It could, it could go forward to town meeting again.
Regardless.
Yeah.
They can make a recommendation or not, but regardless, we could still have the opportunity to move forward.
Exactly. They would have to hold the hearing.
Right.
If they did recommend against it, it might happen. It still would go, go forward.
Okay. And so one last, if, if something like that would have happened, is there, or if we bring it back again, or if the community brings it back again, would it be the same process? Are you, is the thought process, or would the thought process be that we would co-sponsor, that you'd co-sponsor with Planning Board again? You probably haven't had time to even think about that, but that's going to be asked at some point. Would we have the same model, the same process that we had before? If we do, what improvements could we make to that process? So I'll leave you with those thoughts. Thank you.
Good. I'll take that as a suggestion. Thank you. Please.
Hi, I'm Megan O'Connell, 44 South Champswood Road, and I'll try to speak up. I now have a quiet voice. I want to bring up three points. One is a point I haven't heard other people's mention yet. I could be wrong. But the voting lists at check-in were not accurate. Patty, thankfully, was there. But when I went to check in, my name was not on the list at all, despite actually being on the town ballot this past May. And it was only because Patty vouched for me that I was able to vote, and there was at least one other person that happened to. So just going forward for future town meetings, you know, I think you might need to look into how that voting list is generated. To be sure, it's 100% accurate. Second thing, and I mentioned this in one of the other meetings on the zoning bylaw early, over the summer, and that is that, you know, when I looked at the people in the room, to me, it doesn't look representative of the town of Westford. I think that's true again tonight. I would argue that's true month, last Monday night as well. It did not look like a true cross-section of the community. And especially when there's a lot of people complaining now that, you know, democracy was, was subverted or not upheld. I think especially with articles or bylaws that everyone knows is controversial. I don't think there's anyone in this room that would have... I don't think there's anyone in this room that would have said two weeks ago that this was not a controversial article. I think everyone knows that. Now, would it be possible for the town, with things like this in the future, to put it on a non-binding referendum in an election before it goes to town meeting? To try to get greater participation and more voters to be able to have a say in a matter?
Can I respond to that?
Sure.
So, a zoning article cannot be put on a ballot? It has to go through a town meeting per Massachusetts state law?
I understand that, but before it gets to town meeting, can it be used as, just to inform the board if there's broad support?
The suggestion is, could we explore putting, is it possible to put a non-binding resolution on the ballot to get another read from the community? So, I accept that.
I can look into that.
I accept that question.
Greater. But the third and last thing I want to bring up is the chief's motion to reconsider. On the town website, on the town meeting page, there's a link to the handbook from the Westford League of Women Voters that very clearly says that a motion to reconsider can only be brought by someone that voted on the prevailing side, and that never seemed to be clarified during the meeting. So, I guess, two things. One, is that true? And if it is true, how would we have ascertained that you voted on the prevailing side? And number two, if it's not true, why is it on the town website? So, thank you.
Yeah, question directed to, to Andrea.
Yeah, so I think I actually answered that question at town meeting. The town meeting is governed by town meeting time. That is our guiding law. The League of Women Voters booklet is an excellent resource, but it's not what we are, we have to go by. We have to go by town meeting time. And in town meeting time, what it says is that some moderators ask if the person making the motion to reconsider in fact voted in the majority. However, especially in the case of a secret ballot, it causes lots of problems, it, it requires a verification that you can't get, and the recommendation is that motions for reconsideration be liberally accepted. And that's why it was accepted without any question as to which side that the moving party voted on.
Thank you for that. So, I've been corrected that we actually can start a scheduled hearing later than the posted time, but not before, out of respect for the fact that you're all here tonight. What I'd like to do is try to accept all the questions or comments from the people currently standing. I encourage you to please share new information, new insights, new questions. If you've already heard it before, then I think we've already accepted that, absorbed it, we're going to work on it. So, please, Al.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Al Prescott, Lakeshore Drive North. Please accept an open letter from Westford Pro 2A to the board. That will be briefer than that letter. At a recent special town meeting, members of Westford Pro 2A lawful firearms owners and sportsmen and women voted overwhelmingly not to approve Article 9. The vote was nowhere near the two-thirds majority needed. From the day this process started many months ago, Westford Pro 2A stated that, "Even though we believe the chief already had the authority to require a 500-foot setback between firearms businesses and a safety plan, we would support those two items, but not more." Instead, the Select Board, refusing to allow comment almost every time this issue was discussed and their undue influence on other elected boards, lawful firearms owners and sportsmen were systematically ignored and in some cases outright vilified. The result was a proposal that we could never support and worked actively to defeat. Lawful firearms owners, sportsmen, sportswomen, and the local clubs have been pillars of this community longer than virtually anyone alive at these hearings. Our support for this community is seen through our actions. It includes providing free training facilities for our local police, donating tens of thousands of dollars in local scholarships over the town's history, maintaining open space and conservation with privately funded managed forests, and maintaining fire department access to protect residents, and much more. Despite our contributions to the town and our efforts to demonstrate good faith, our voters collectively feel they are constantly being challenged by the government of Westford to defend their constitutional liberties from attempts to restrict these rights. We support the chief of police and the town of Westford, and will continue to provide the support mentioned. But if the elected town officials continue not to listen to a large swath of the voting public, we will continue to oppose those efforts through every lawful means possible. Westford Pro 2A calls on all the boards to work with us, not against us, and to oppose and to not oppress the longest-standing and most law-abiding members of this community. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, Al. Kristi?
Thanks. Kristi Bates, 23 Pierce Ave. I have a statement to read, but I just want to first say that the bylaw as written did not impact the sports clubs in town. There was no impact. I just think it's important to point that out.
You're absolutely right. Thank you.
2A lives.
Okay, so, I'm extending the start of the scheduled hearing because I want to hear from you, but I want to hear respectful suggestions that are meaningful to this conversation. So, please, Kristi.
I didn't, was I disrespectful?
Not at all. I was speaking to the crowd. We appreciate if you, don't interrupt.
Thank you. So, this is a statement from Save Sensible Zoning Westford. We'll do better next time is not acceptable. This issue is too important. This was a good faith effort, a cross-section of residents who are teachers, social workers, parents, veterans, gun owners, retirees, and many other organized for eight months to listen to the police chief, work with two boards, get support from the other boards and committees and town groups. We did compromise, excuse me, we did comparative research, got our facts straight, and reached out to other towns working on this issue. We raised money for signs, canvassed, phone-banked, consulted experts, wrote letters to the editor, and talked with town leaders. We appreciate that the Select Board and Planning Board listened and altogether came up with a sensible bylaw that did not infringe on Second Amendment rights. The fact that it won 55% of the vote under the worst conditions we've experienced at a town meeting is significant. We need to listen to the majority and try to get a new bylaw as soon as possible, and with that said, I do hope that the Select Board and the Planning Board who cosponsored this bylaw would meet together to talk about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristi. Yep.
Good evening. When this first came in front of the Planning Board, the first thing I said to the, what's that? Melissa, Nakashin-Holzberg, Betty Lane, first thing I asked the Planning Board was to remember that we're all neighbors. We've been neighbors for so long, to please respect everybody in this process. And I think you've heard words tonight that a lot of folks did not feel respected in this process. People came to the microphone, they tried to speak, they were shut down. People tried to negotiate, there was no negotiating. I, for one, would like to see, as the chief would like to see, our public safety advanced. But that can't be done in a vacuum, and it can't be done with one-side discussion. It needs to be done with collaboration, and you all need to show that leadership. Please, show that leadership. That's what I'm asking for tonight. And I want to address some misinformation that I'm hearing. I'd like you, please, to shut down the misinformation when you hear it, because this is what causes so much strife in the community. For example, Sue, you've shepherded so many of our kids through school, and I respect you for that, okay? But I am going to say, and I'm going to say, that I'd like to make sure we're using facts. So, it sounds like you were, you felt intimidated because there were so many people with so many signs. Just a minute, this is important. Public access to meetings...
This is not for a personal...
Wait, 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 everybody else got to speak. I want a chance to be able to say this.
This is not for a personal response.
When, okay, then to the board.
You were to address me if you have a comment.
Then to the board, to the board.
And it's only if you've got a constructive comment about the meeting.
There were schoolteachers with signs from one end of the building to the other end of the building. I was so in awe by how organized the schoolteachers were when they wanted their override. I actually took video. I engaged teachers to ask where they were from, why, why they were so interested, and many of them, most of them, were from out of town. So, to suggest that the people who were engaged, and a few of them who came out of town, was a problem, is not. If it's okay for other aspects and other votes of teachers...
If you could please wrap up, we're interested in the input about conducting the meeting.
I think it should be fine for this issue as well.
Okay.
Another issue is folks were concerned about people showing ID. Many people were on the inactive, so they actually did have to show ID. I want to put that issue to rest. Are you agreeing? Yes. Many people were inactive. So, a lot of people, thank you.
That's why you have to answer the census.
That's right.
I just want to throw that in.
Because they didn't answer the census, correct. And the other thing I want to point out is, this town has spent so much money, in fact, Andrea, you've been, you've been on this board for this long, that we've spent so much money and so much effort to have study committees about how to get more people involved in town meeting, how to get more people to come to town meeting, and the first time we actually do it, we want to cut and run? This isn't the time to cut and run. This is the time to figure out how to embrace this kind of, this kind of interaction and figure out how to make it work. I think it would be, it would be a sad day if we said, "Oh, we wanted to have more participation, now that we want to, now that we got it, we're going to shut it down." I hope that's not going to happen. I did not see any double voting. I think I've double-triple-checked that there wasn't any double voting. Chief, I want to know from the chief, because the chief says he needs the tools to keep this town safe, and that's what's important. And chief, I've read the law over and over and over again, Mass. General Law 140, Chapter 140, Section 122, 122B says "may." I heard you say that the law says "shall." I think you might have been referring to the law for permits rather than licensing businesses. So, I'm asking if you might look at that and see, if your reading is as mine, that it says "may," and therefore, you could have some guidelines that you might want to impose in this town to keep the town safe. I'm hoping these are the factual discussions that we'll be able to have instead of some of the gossip.
Are you ready to wrap up?
I'm just about ready to wrap up, yes.
Please wrap up.
Additionally, Town Council did say during the joint board hearing between Planning Board and the Board of Health, that the courts have opined that this is a Pro 2A issue. I'm sorry, not a Pro, a Second Amendment issue. He said it clearly.
Who did?
The Town Council was sitting right here, and he said it, and you were sitting over there, I'm sorry.
Do you have a question?
The Board of Health was sitting here. So, I want to state clearly, this is why so many in the community are so frustrated, because they feel that their constitutional rights are being, are being attacked. It does impact both clubs, the way I read it, and, and also at the, at the meeting, I'm wrapping up here, at the meeting, it was stated that the chief asked for this. My understanding is it was the Planning Board that asked for this, and the chief, like all the other boards, weighed in. I would like clarity, did the chief ask for it, or did the Planning Board ask for it? Because my vote might have been different based on that information, and my understanding was the chief several times said, "He didn't ask for all this stuff." He asked for a couple of things, that's all he asked for, which I still think he can do under Mass. General Law, Chapter 140, Section 122. So, let's not waste time in keeping us safe. We can do it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, I said I was only going to recognize the people who were already standing when I said we're ready to move on to the next topic. I see two more. If you have a short point about the meeting itself that you think adds clarity or gives us something extra to work on, please, but unfortunately, we don't have time for a long discussion that really belonged in the town meeting context, not in this context. So, with that, if you've got a question or a comment that we can enter in, that would be great.
I don't really know. Chris Glens, Texas Road.
Yep.
I have one comment and then a question. The comment is, I think everybody here, the boards and so forth, have decided that taking the word of Town Council or the recommendation of Town Council, that the meeting was legal is one thing. That is an opinion, it's a legal opinion. It's always up to the Select Board or the boards to do what is right for business in the town. So, the Select Board would have the opportunity and the right to reconsider what happened at town meeting, given that all the stuff, which I'm not going to reiterate again, but there were questions about a lot of people feeling disenfranchised, and a lot of people's contributing about a lot of other things, double voting and this and that, the next thing. When people go to a town meeting and they can't even get in, and they have to drive around it, and then they go home, that's not right. Any rate, it is up to the board, and the board has the legal right to listen to that opinion, but I would strongly say, I mean, the facts are here. This is such a big deal that the board really should take a look at it again and consider and vote whether you want to accept that and just plunge ahead and say, "We'll try to do better next time," or whether you want to take a look at that again. And as what should have happened and what happened, I understood from a meeting that happened when the asphalt plant went through, that the meeting was stopped because there was so much stuff going on, and it was postponed and put off for a couple of weeks until they could establish a better environment. That's, should have been what happened at town meeting, but it didn't. But the town board does have the right to figure out what to do now. That's my comment, and I would urge you to do that.
Okay. And your question?
My question is, should a citizen's petition come forward? There are some people who are saying that you need to have the Planning Board approve or a public hearing on it. Some people are thinking that has to happen before you can do a petition. My understanding, I've done a lot of research on this, my interpretation of what's in the rules, are that a citizen's petition could come forward. If it goes to the Select Board, the Select Board has 45 days to call a special town meeting. During that time would be, my understanding, the Planning Board would hold a public hearing and get comments and decide whether they support or don't support it. But that doesn't have to happen prior to submitting a petition to begin with. Is that correct?
Kristen, you want to come in?
My understanding is, the way that you described it is an option. There's other options available as well.
Would you be, would you clarify that a bit? Because I don't, you know...
But I, I think what Chris is asking, and correct me if I'm wrong, is, does the Planning Board have to hold a hearing before the petition for a special town meeting comes forward?
No.
And I think the answer to that is?
No.
No.
So, you're, you're...
That's what I thought.
So, you're correct in what you outlined.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks. Beth?
Beth Morrison, Ten Kelly Road, and also member of Finance Committee. I think town meeting is pretty antiquated at this point, when we have over 18,000 registered voters in town meeting, and there's no physical way to accommodate every voter who would like to attend town meeting. Is that correct?
We, we don't have a forum that could handle all the registered voters.
So, what is our, what is like our capacity? Like a WA, say we solve the parking issues, is it 1,500? Is it 2,000? If we have capacity in, in March, what are we going to do about that? If people can't get into the building, if we have parking issues, do we have to reschedule the meeting?
So, Angela, I think you did look into what the, the capacity is in the two-room solution in the building, and then if we're holding the meeting outside, that's a different capacity issue, but I don't know if you have any you want to share there.
Right, I guess the real answer, Beth, to your question is, we don't know what the, what the uppermost capacity is. You're certainly right, we can't accommodate 17,000 voters anywhere. There's no way to do that. I think in the two rooms, the capacity is about 1,500, which is about 300 over any meeting that we've ever had. Outside would be quite a bit more than that if we had an outdoor meeting, but I...
Which is difficult in March.
Well, we would have to change the dates of the meetings if we were going to do that. I would definitely, I definitely understand what you're saying and think it's a legitimate point that needs to be brought up and discussed, and it should be part of the ongoing discussion.
So, are we going to explore other options than what we have, like explore representative town meeting or city-style government? Because it's just not acceptable to me that we have baked in voter suppression in the system. So, I'm not okay with voter suppression, and I'm wondering if you guys are okay with voter suppression.
Well, this is one point, though. Think about this, so if you've got now, the average town meeting has got 300, 400 people there. Representative town meeting, you may have, maybe have 200, and so, we're saying we have a problem hosting over 1,000 interested voters, and our solution is to cut that to 200, and the person who is in your district may not represent your point of view. So be really careful what you say about Representative Town Meeting, because it'll guarantee that your delegate is...
Are we going to explore it, though?
We can, but...
So to your point, I mean, we are all sincerely committed to making the meeting accessible, and nobody's okay with voter suppression. We will discuss as a board whether, we've heard this suggestion a couple of times. We've got it in letters that had a lot of signatures on it. So it's something we'll discuss. And so we could decide to impanel basically a study committee, as was requested in a number of letters to investigate the options and the pluses and minuses of the different forms. So we could do that, but we haven't had a chance to deliberate on that. But I think we'll have time. I hope we'll have time later in this meeting to come back. If we don't, we'll put it on the agenda for future use.
And is that a process that we could take to citizen's petition if you're not able to do that?
The formation of a study committee?
Or a move to a different style of government?
I guess, Beth, I would have to check. So your question is if we consider it and decide not to, is there a way the public can put forward and basically trigger that? So that's something I'm going to have to look into. I don't know the answer to that question, Beth. Yep?
We did the Representative Town Meeting Committee back there before 2010. George was the chair of that. And that was a result of a citizen's petition. It went from citizen petition to the committee and then to the Town Meeting.
Okay, so that may be an answer, too. So if, yep.
Okay, I just think like a ballot would probably be the most accessible option than Town Meeting. So, you know, you can put that...
But you can't do zoning bylaws on a ballot.
I know, but we could have a city government where...
Oh, there's specific legal processes by which you would change the charter to go from open Town Meeting to any other form of government. And we would have to follow those processes wherever they are. And certainly, if the community, if there's any degree of interest in the community and people want to explore that, I'm not in charge, but I would certainly be in favor of people exploring that if that's an interest of people in the community.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Risco, extend this thing. When we looked at it, I think somewhere along the line we were told that if we did Representative Town Meeting, we'd have to have, when we had six precincts, we'd have to have 240 representatives in this town. So every third year, I mean, every year you're going to have to vote in 80 members at your annual Town Meeting, and so of your representatives. So I think we decided that this was a purer form of democracy. The open Town Meeting was preferable than the representative Town Meeting. That was kind of our recommendation back then. So just, I don't know whether that's...
Tom, can I just, just to that?
Sure, Angela, and then George.
I just want to say from meeting with other moderators through the Mass Moderators Association that, and I'm not saying this means we shouldn't discuss it, but many towns that do have representative town government have a hard time getting enough people to run for the 200 or so positions that they have open. So it, I'm not saying we shouldn't discuss it. I'm just saying everything has its pluses and minuses.
But a study group would sort of highlight these pluses and minuses again for us all to see and then make a decision with. George?
George Murray, 14 Haywood Road. Just a couple of observations. One was, well, I was one of those, my wife and I were driving around the academy. It's nice, small, four sides, but we explored every possible parking place and then went home, watched it on TV. So, you know, the Board here and all the citizen input have done, I think, an excellent job of identifying all the things that went wrong, all the things that have to be addressed to fix the issues that we explored at Town Meeting or that we experienced at Town Meeting. But we're given that. It seems like we're all still getting our knickers in a knot about all the conspiracies and all the terrible things that are happening in town, and it's nowhere near as nice as it used to be. We just need to give that a break. I chaired that committee 15 years ago on representative Town Meetings, and I've looked at it really closely over the last few days. I don't think I would change a single line of it. I didn't write it. Bob Price wrote it and did a masterful job, I thought. The issues that we have with open Town Meeting are nowhere near as difficult as the issues that we would get into with representative Town Meeting and city charter form of government. But the offer is this. That report, it's a 19-page report that we issued. At the end of that study, we studied it for a year. That's in the Town Records. If it's not, I can provide a copy of it. We can put it on the webpage, do whatever you want. If somebody wants to start over and do it again, at least it would be a springboard that they could look at and say, "Okay, here's a place to start. This is what they found out. This is what Vermont did. This is what Needham did. This is what Chompsford did." And it's not a panacea, that's for sure. But if we wanted to go that way, it's at least a place to start. So I would just urge that we get out of this morass of throwing rocks and find a conspiracy and a plot behind every single thing that happens in town. And let's just work together and figure out, okay, how do we make it better going forward? Thanks.
All right, appreciate that, George. So thank you all. We are sincerely grateful for you sharing your ideas. We'll continue to report in this meeting and elsewhere kind of the steps we're taking to make sure we're generating the fully accessible experience, that we're investigating and supporting some of the other items that have come up tonight. So we appreciate that. At this point, we're going to move to, yes, go, Chris?
I just want to go back to something Bob Jeffries pointed out. So Bob, did you ask a question? Did you get an answer to your question, or were you just merely making a point?
I wanted to know, was there a vote? Because there's no tallies for the motion to reconsider. Yeah, there's no tally for the motion to withdraw.
So I have a similar question now. So is there a way we can answer that? I don't know, Patty, you know, or Angela, you know?
Honestly, I would have to go back and look at the video to see what happened, although my recollection is that the chief withdrew his motion and that I said that leaves us with the old count on the original vote.
Okay, so I think we have an answer from Greg. So Greg Corbo, if you could.
Good evening. Thank you for your Mr. Chair. Yeah, I wanted to offer a point of clarification as to the procedure that was used during that, that final motion for reconsideration, since there was some actual amount of confusion. You know, first and foremost, we've heard a bit about, you know, what are the rules of Town Meeting? And, you know, to be perfectly clear, under Massachusetts general laws, the moderator has the final decision as to all questions of order. And the Town's bylaws indicate that the book Town Meeting Time is the official manual for the Westford Town Meeting. The bylaws also say that unless the moderator determines that it is not appropriate for a particular situation. Likewise, formal rules of parliamentary procedure, such as Roberts' Rules or Rules Stated in other manuals, are not necessarily applicable to Town Meeting unless the moderator decides that it's necessary to follow them in a particular instance. So with respect to reconsideration, the moderator correctly ruled that she was not required to inquire as to whether or not the chief voted on the prevailing side. It was within her discretion to accept that motion. That motion was made and was seconded. And in the course of attempting to vote on that motion, there was a substantial amount of disruption and confusion, such that the moderator felt that she could not get an accurate determination of what the vote might be. So she stopped the voting at that point, and the chief made a decision to withdraw the motion. The moderator accepted his decision to withdraw that motion. And shortly thereafter, there was a motion to adjourn without a day. That motion was accepted and was voted on, thus ending the meeting. And so while the procedure used may not have been entirely consistent with what some manuals of parliamentary procedure require, it was within the moderator's discretion to proceed as she did in order to ensure that there was a successful resolution of the meeting, which there was. And as has been said many times before, if people on either side of that vote feel that they were aggrieved by what happened at this meeting, the remedy is to either by petition or by initiative of Town officials to convene another meeting or put the question on the warrant for another meeting, and these issues can be resolved at that time.
Okay, thanks, Greg. Chris, did that help?
That is, thank you very much.
Okay, great. We are now going to move on to the next meeting. I'll just give a minute to pause. If you are leaving, please do that now quietly. The next item up is the public hearing related to a potential nuisance dangerous dog. We're going to ask Attorney Corbo to talk through the process that we'll be going through and help us sort of walk through this in an orderly and correct way. So maybe you could go ahead and start, Attorney Corbo, just explaining sort of what the structure of this hearing will be, and then we can hear from the parties.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. First and foremost, if, I'm having audio issues. Please let me know, and I could take a moment and try to switch to another device. But if everyone can hear me okay, I will proceed.
So far, so good.
Okay, so, Mr. Chair, through you, this is a hearing in response to a complaint that a dog owned or kept in the town of Westford is a nuisance or a dangerous dog. This hearing is in accordance with Massachusetts general laws, Chapter 140, Section 157. The hearing itself will proceed in three phases, generally speaking. First, the Board may hear evidence and testimony from the individual who brought the complaint and anybody who wishes to support a finding that the dog is a nuisance or dangerous dog. In the second phase, the Board will hear evidence and testimony from the owner of the dog and anyone who wishes to speak against such a finding. And then finally, the Board will have an opportunity to deliberate and vote on two questions. First, whether the dog meets the definition of nuisance or dangerous dog as those terms are defined at law. And if the answer to that question is yes, then what, if any, remedy should be imposed? So before we get started, are there any questions about the procedure?
Any questions about the procedure? Okay, if at any point something's not clear, just let us know, and we'll get an answer.
So, Mr. Chair, through you and to you, the first step here is to formally open the public hearing. So you can do that by making a motion to open the public hearing as stated on the Board's agenda. Give me a second to pull that off.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, and then was there a vote on that? I'm sorry.
There was, yes, Greg.
Okay, great. Okay, so now that the hearing is open, first thing that I will do is ask that anybody who intends to give testimony in this matter, can they please stand and be sworn in?
Okay, I think they're standing.
Great, thank you. And if you would all please raise your right hands.
Okay, right hands are up.
And do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give in this matter is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Okay, we have affirmation, Greg.
Great, thank you. Okay, so according to my records, the complaint in this matter was brought by Larissa Mier-Palowski. Is Ms. Mier-Palowski here?
Would you like to come forward to the microphone? If you can go ahead and take a seat. If you'd be more comfortable there, either one will work.
And, Mr. Chair, through you and for the record, you have in your meeting packet the original complaint filed by Ms. Mier-Palowski, as well as incident reports from Town of Westford Animal Control detailing two incidences on November 16th, 2022, and June 30th, 2023, as well as videos and several letters, both in support and against the dogs. And so those should be made officially part of the record.
Yes, let's make it so.
So through you, Mr. Chair, to Ms. Mier-Palowski, would you please state your full name and address for the record?
My name is Larissa Mier-Palowski. I live at 1 Hummingbird Lane, Westford, Massachusetts.
Thank you. And would you please describe for the Board in your own words what is the basis for your complaint?
The recent issue that's happened that triggered me to file this complaint is when I was working on my property. Suddenly, I heard the growling. And when I raised my head, there was a large dog that belongs to the neighbors, a massive dog. He's about 200 pounds. It was growling at me, and I started to step back slowly. And he started movement toward me, and growlings became very loud. I was petrified. I don't know, I never had a dog. I don't know how to deal with dog. For me, it was terrifying. I'm still terrified to walk this path. It was on the path on my property. I want to feel safe on my property. I want to feel safe around my property. I want to feel safe in my town. And that's not happened. So that's what was basically triggered me.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so what you're just describing, that is the incident that occurred on June 30th of 2023?
That's exactly right.
And prior to that date, have you had any experiences with this particular dog?
Yes, so my son experienced some issue. It was scary for him to the same extent. The same dog jumped the fence and started moving towards him and was running around. In my case, the dog was smearing the saliva at me and was growling. At his case, it didn't happen, but it's very scary. So I don't know this animal. I don't know the dog. I don't know how to handle dog. I want my kids will be safe in nearby environment. I want my kids to be able to walk by themselves. And it's not what happened. And I don't want to wait for another case.
And in the incident that happened on June 30th, where was the dog's owner while this was happening?
Dog's owner was on dog's owner's property.
And how did she respond?
The dog was on my property. The dog was without leash, without tag. I just knew where the dog belongs to. And at this moment, I realized that I don't have any help. I'm just there in front of the dog. So I heard her calling the dog. Dog did not respond, did not listen, did not come back to her. Dog doesn't listen to the owner at all. And then I screamed to her to come and get the dog.
And did she come and get the dog?
What did you say?
I'm sorry, and when you screamed for the owner to come get the dog, did she come?
Yes, she did.
Okay, and what happened when she got there?
When she got there, she had in her hands just a rope, not the leash, not the harness, just the rope. She started to put the rope around the neck and started to tie it. The dog escaped, and she called the dog. Dog did not listen at all. The dog did not respond, responded. So I called the, I was feeling like responsible. I was, I didn't want, the dog started movement toward my backyard. It was like in wooded part of my property. He started to move toward the grass, and I screamed to the dog, "Daisy, come here right now." And the dog did listen to me and came to me and started to continue smearing the saliva at me. The dog did listen to me. Dog did not listen to the owner. But the interesting point, when the owner came, the dog stopped growling. So next to the owner, the dog behaves better. It wasn't growling anymore.
And did the dog bite you at any time or try to bite you at any time?
Uh, no. It was close, but no.
Aside from the incident that you described with your son, which I think we'll hear other testimony about, were there other circumstances where you've seen this dog in your yard?
Uh, no.
Or outside of its own property?
Uh, no.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, I have no further questions. Do any members of the Board have questions?
Questions?
I mean, so you mentioned the dog had approached you. How close did it come?
So I was covered with saliva. My pants were wet from saliva. But when I noticed the dog, when he was growling loudly, he was like about 15 feet from me on the trail. I cleaned up trail in my woods, and the dog was standing there and the growling loudly. And I started to move like slowly back. When I stepped like a couple steps back, it was like jumping toward me. It was very scary. It's a huge dog.
Any other questions? Chris?
Yeah, so it's a little hard for me to ascertain from the pictures, but it looks like there's two sets of fences. So you have a fence on your property, and then the other property owner has a fence as well. At this juncture that you're describing, were you outside your fenced-in property?
My fence, it doesn't cover, it doesn't enclose my property. I have a fence that going as a wall to certain, on certain part of the property. But there's ways to go around. I don't have a dog. I don't have, it's mostly not to see the neighbors.
Just a privacy.
It's a privacy fence, but it's not like I need to secure perimeter to, not to... So they supposed to have something to keep the dog inside.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I don't think we have any other questions, Greg.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Mier-Palowski. We have nothing further for you at this time.
My name is Mier-Palowski.
I'm sorry. Nothing further for you at this time.
Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair, is there a... Through you, Mr. Chair, is there a Ms. Evie Beers here?
Nope.
Okay, then through you, Mr. Chair, just for the record, we do have a report involving an incident in which Ms. Beers was walking a dog by the power lines, the dog known as Daisy was running loose and unattended, and began jumping on the smaller dog. In that instance, it was alleged that the owner once again had difficulties in securing the dog, but once again, despite the interaction, there was no biting incident at that time. Mr. Chair, you have two videos of that particular incident, I don't know if there is a way to play them on the screen?
I can get it up, just give me one second. Yes, I will get that.
Kristen's just pulling those up, Greg.
Great, thank you.
So I am getting an error that the video is private and I don't have access, I will try to get to it a different way.
So, Mr. Chair, through you, maybe we can...
Yeah, why don't we proceed?
Move on, the town manager works on that issue. Through you, is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to make a complaint about this particular dog?
I don't see anybody, Greg.
Okay, thank you. Then through you, Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask if the dog owner, Ms. Lindsay Campbell, is present?
Lindsay Campbell? Lindsay?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, Ms. Campbell, would you please introduce yourself with your name and address for the record?
I think...
If you both could, that would be great.
Okay, Lindsay Campbell for Hummingbird Lane.
William Campbell for Hummingbird Lane.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Campbell, so you've had an opportunity to hear the testimony that was given and to review the reports and records in the board's packet, how would you like to respond to the allegations that have been made about your dog Daisy?
As you could expect, we don't find her to be a nuisance. Given the report, I'd like to use the Capitolton's own words as part of the justification. Mrs. Mier Polowski just expressed how she was petrified at this dog that was growling and barking within 15 feet of her, and upon being petrified, her first instinct was to call the dog to her, but seems like a conflicting act, I mean, if I'm in fear of my life, I don't, I don't call the dog to me. Partially too, I mean, if this dog is sitting there growling and barking at her, upon being called to this individual, the dog proceeded to lick her, I mean, it just seems like conflicting statements. And again, given the fact, you know, this all happened on June 30th, a police report was given on July 3rd, I mean, if this is a major issue and you were petrified that something could happen, that the dog had breached the fence, wouldn't you go a lot sooner than July 3rd to file, you know, the police report? You know, the incidents that happened in early November, as it was stated, I will state, these individuals were, as stated in the report, on national grid power lines, which is private property and therefore trespassing. The dog did breach the fence upon, I believe it was Officer Jansen had come out, we had found that there was a branch that had fallen down on the fence, the dog is a large dog, it's an English Mastiff, anybody that might know English Mastiffs, they're actually known through the AKC as gentle giants, they don't jump typically, they're not known for barking, they're not known for growling, that's how they are known as gentle giants, they are these giant dogs, these about 185 pounds, and it's just, you know, she breached the fence, and we have since corrected it. We found another instance, obviously, on this day that happened with Mrs. Mier Polowski, and have since completed the corrections.
And just from my own standpoint, just to give you guys a little history, we've had Daisy since she was about nine weeks old, we have four children, 13, 10, 8, and 6, we have a lot of people in and out of our house, this dog is very used to lots of different people, she's social and friendly, probably a little too excited sometimes at 2 and 1/2 and her size, but a very friendly dog. These particular instances, I was not home for the one that happened in November of 2022, my mother and daughter were involved in that, my daughter went to go grab Daisy because of course, when she saw that she exited the yard, she did not, she knew that wasn't okay, she was hysterically crying as the neighbor was very aggressively yelling and swearing, which is an often occurrence for us around these people, and they quickly took, got the dog to the best of their ability, she was probably very playful and wanting to play with this other dog, my mom asked the woman to calm down, and we went on our way. The incident in June, as soon as I noticed that she exited the yard, I ran in the house, this so-called rope she's referring to is actually from the veterinarian's office, it's a slip lead, which is a very quick way to get the dog, since I didn't have all of her gear, and it was something I wanted to do quickly, and I went to the property line, she was probably about 200 feet into her woods behind her home, not a cleared area, and I stopped because of all of the other issues that we have with these neighbors, I respectfully said, is it okay for me to enter your property to get the dog? She said yes. At that time, I saw Daisy was actually right up against the, near the fence area, she hadn't approached the woman to the best of my knowledge, I don't know when I ran to get the rope, if she had moved from that spot, but as I approached to get Daisy, she thought it would be silly to kind of run from me, and I was actually really surprised that my neighbor was so kind, because we haven't had the best interactions, but she did call her over, and Daisy went right over to her and started to sniff her, and so I went to put the lead on, and again, she saw me coming and kind of bounced off, and Larissa did it again, she said Daisy, and so I got her, and then we left. I believe we have, we have an Arlo camera actually out in the woods, and I don't know if we can still obtain from that date, but I believe the incident took approximately five minutes from the moment she exited to the moment she was back in our property. This is not something that she does all the time, there was a bit of a hill, a high point right where she exited, and the fence had some dipping. The first fence that we installed was an orange plastic construction fence, because Mastiffs are not typically known to be jumpers, we were just looking for kind of a visual barrier for them, we have another one as well, just so that they saw the perimeter, so that they could utilize the woods, but just see where they should stay. Once we started to see that either there was blemishes where the fence was dipping, or that Daisy was going to jump this, we realized that we need to change that, so we then got pallets, and we created an upcycled fence by screwing pallets together and using T-posts in place to create a sturdier, taller fence that was not going to dip if a branch fell near it or just from other weather. And the same with, when we noticed the incident on June 30th, again, we immediately took action, we now have doubled up, we've gotten metal fencing, and we've just tried to secure this, we consider ourselves very responsible dog owners, we are appalled that our dog left the yard, but sometimes that happens, and we did the best we could to quickly rectify that.
I would also add too, that obviously, as the owners of the dogs, we are going to feel that she's not a nuisance. We have, if you'd like, Daisy has a procedure coming up where our veterinarian had recommended to use a specific vet for the way that the procedure would be done, Daisy met this vet for the first time on Friday, and we have a letter from them referring their interactions and observations with Daisy. Additionally, we have a letter from the Abbott School, who last year, for a lot of the 4th graders, Daisy was actually brought on site to use, to interact with the children, and they actually made a specific comment that they found that a lot of the students who had anxiety issues, shall we say, actually kind of found calmness when being around Daisy, and I think that speaks volumes that a school within the community is willing to allow this dog to come in, that is a nuisance.
I'm not sure what was in the packets, but just to like, in case it didn't go into the packet, we actually received four letters quickly, just to be able to provide to you, one was the teacher, as mentioned, one was the new vet that she just met on Friday, and another person that is extremely afraid of dogs, a family member, who has interacted with Daisy and allowed her two-year-old around Daisy, but does not allow her two-year-old around her sister's dog. And then lastly, was a letter from a trainer that we went to classes with as well, we wanted to be able to provide what kind of history and what other people's experiences have been with Daisy, not just our own, as well as some neighbors and friends here as well.
Through you, Mr. Chair, can I ask a couple questions?
Yep, please.
Thank you, so to either you, Mr. or Mrs. Campbell, you know, I appreciate your testimony, and certainly no dog owner is going to consider their own dog to be a nuisance, but I don't know if we'll be able to see that video or not, but we'd have to acknowledge that, based on her sheer size, right, that Daisy acting in a way that is excited and jumping on another dog or a person, has much more potential to turn dangerous than it would if it was a much smaller dog.
I would agree, and I would defer to, I believe it was Officer, Animal Control Officer Hurston's report, who saw the video, and she felt that there was nothing astray. This is a Westford's own Animal Control Officer, I know they might not be a professional, but...
Well, she could speak to what she visualized, but I'm pretty sure the dog's tails were wagging and they were having fun, just because of the sheer size of a dog, you can't just say that they're going to hurt somebody, that's just an inaccurate statement.
Right, but, you know, based on the size of the dog, right, if the dog was, say, jumping on a child, even if the dog was thinking in its mind that it was playing, that could cause that child to be hurt, seriously.
Perhaps.
I could get hurt walking down the street, I mean, I find it irrelevant.
But again, that doesn't make the dog nuisance or, you know, dangerous, or there's no laws out there that you can't have a large dog.
Well, but then the question would be, what do you intend to do to prevent that behavior from happening again in the future?
We've, as we've stated, we've reinforced the fence.
And is the dog undergoing training to ensure that it does not jump on people and other dogs in that way?
She, we always are constantly trying to work on training, we do have a busy life, she's definitely not the dog that goes to obedience rallies and winning awards by any means, and it is something, I did reach out to someone recently, but I wouldn't consider her that she's always jumping on people either, because when people come in, we tend to ask her to go to her place, and we reward her for doing that, and then when she's calm, she can meet people, it doesn't mean it's perfect by any means, but that is something that we are always working on, because we do appreciate a dog that is well behaved.
And at this time, is the entire property enclosed with the fence?
Yes.
And are there any holes or broken spots in the fence?
Not that we're aware of, and it's approximately, on average, 4 and 1/2 to 5 feet tall.
And do you, do you bring the dog out for walks on a leash?
Yes.
And who is it that walks the dog?
Myself.
Okay, and so if you're out walking the dog, and the dog were to get free from you, has the dog been trained to return to you when you call it?
I mean, we try, but I don't know if I'd say that she's perfectly, a perfect recall, again, that's not a requirement of dog ownership, it's just something that most people want.
Well, but we're talking here about, again, a very extremely large dog, that if it were to be running loose and jumping on someone, they could be seriously hurt, and I'd have to say that it would be the duty of a responsible dog owner to take precautions to ensure that that couldn't happen, and so what I'm asking you is, what precautions are you taking if you are out on a walk with the dog and it gets away from you?
So, I mean, as with anything, we do training, and we've done training, and we continue to work at it, I mean, it's a lot like children, if you don't mind me asking, do you have a child? You know, people...
I have, I have three children, yes.
You teach your children not to swear? Nothing perfect?
It's not the same. We're talking about an animal here, and an animal that has to be properly contained to ensure that it doesn't hurt people, and, you know, what we're, what the board is faced with is whether, you know, this dog is a nuisance or a dangerous dog, and part of that inquiry is whether you are responsible owners that can take care of a dog like this and prevent it from causing harm, and the questions that I'm trying to ask or to tell you just on the board is whether you are willing to take that responsibility, and, you know, frankly, your sarcastic answers, I don't know, are helping your cause very much, so, again, I'd ask in a more serious way, what precautions are you taking to ensure that if the dog is out on a walk, that it's not going to hurt someone, and that if you lose control of it, that it's going to come back to you?
So, I can speak because I'm the one that walks Daisy, I'm not walking her all the time, first of all, it's once in a while, I have very much awareness and control, and I have never lost her on the leash thus far, I understand that could happen, I hear what you're saying, we have also done classes, various classes with her for training over the time, and recently, I've also reached out into some other training that I would like to continue to pursue, so we are the type of dog owners that are aware and are consistently working on various things amongst our typically busy lifestyle, I just wasn't aware that in our town, if you have a dog of a certain size, that they had to meet a certain specific requirement, but it is something I can show emails as of recently, that I have reached out to another trainer to work on specific things with Daisy, and I have gone to probably two or three other different training classes as well over the two and 1/2 years that we've had her, so it's definitely something that we do take seriously and that we are consistently working at all the time.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, I have no further questions.
Questions from the board?
This is, I guess I'm confused, so I mean, it seems to me that the issue in front of us is that on both occasions, the dog got loose from its yard, right, it did not actually break free from a walk.
Correct.
So, right, so as soon as, the issues aren't really controlling it on a walk, the issue is, is it contained?
Correct.
So that, thank you.
Any other questions?
I do have the videos if, Greg, I do have the videos if you do need them for the matter.
Yes, thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, I think it would be helpful to members of the board and the public to see the two videos, they're very short.
Okay.
I have one other.
May I make a comment too? Just although she was beyond the fence during that video, she's actually still on our property.
Who took that video?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I think we have two more short videos.
I'm sorry, I just wanted, who took the video that we just watched?
Mier Polowski's son. Maripoloski's son.
Thank you.
One moment, bringing up the other video. I have one more video. Looks cut. To take out the profanity perhaps?
No, Jesus. Wait a minute, please, Tom. I'm calling the car. Okay. All right, you can, and I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Please, please, come on, you're going to cry. Okay, we're going to come over. Okay. The fucking fence doesn't even work! Blast the fence with a dog that stitches! Daisy? All right, cut it off here. All right, Daisy. I don't want to touch you. All right, you let go of your leash, I'll bring you right to you. All right, the car's going to be over.
Okay, Greg, what's next?
Um, thank you. Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, um, if there are any additional, uh, questions from members of the board.
Are you raising your hand, John?
Well, have you ever seen Daisy bare her teeth?
Never.
At anyone or any other dog?
Never.
Nope, never.
Because there's a difference in just barking and...
Growling.
Growling, yeah.
I would agree.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions?
For them, no.
Okay, all right, Greg, what's next?
Okay, so, um, before, uh, we move on, are, is there anybody in the audience who, who wishes to speak, um, in favor of the dog at this time?
Uh, there is, there is one gentleman who's approaching the mic.
And before him?
Uh, two, okay.
I just want to make one last comment. I hope that the board also observed that, um, Daisy did stay back for a while. She didn't just charge and go aggressively attacking people as been accused. She did wait, and there was tail wagging.
Okay. Welcome, and if you could please state your name and your address.
I'm Patrick Shields, 51 Forest. Um, so I've had many occasions to meet Daisy.
Mr. Chair, through, through you, I just wanted to, um, confirm, Mr. Shields, did you, um, were you sworn in at the beginning?
I was not clear that it was who it was for, so I did not, but I do swear to tell the truth.
Um, would you please raise your right hand? Um, do you swear that the testimony you were about to give in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes. I do.
Okay, thank you. Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, uh, you may proceed.
So, I've had the ability to meet Daisy several times, uh, at the bus stops. So, sometimes, uh, Daisy will come for a walk for, uh, at the bus. And I can't remember if she has come to our house or if it's the other dog, but, um, uh, both interacting with my five and seven-year-old, uh, boys and our dog as well. Again, there are times when she gets excited like other dogs and they play, but I've never seen any sign of aggression or anything that would deem me to be nervous about her, uh, uh, you know, being an aggressive dog or any kind of way to be concerned. Uh, I do have a lot of experience with dogs, and I have experience with people who are afraid of dogs. And I know big dogs, and Daisy's a big dog, uh, can be very scary, so I appreciate that fact. Um, but I do want to make a note that, uh, there was several comments through the previous proceedings about, you know, Daisy being a big dog and the breed, you know, that that can be a concern, but that the actual statute for nuisance and dangerous dogs states that, uh, no dog shall be deemed dangerous solely based upon growling or barking, or solely based upon their breed. It doesn't call that out, but I would assume their size.
We will get advice from counsel on the, on the statute, so we appreciate you bringing it up, but we'll, we'll cover that.
Um, and at some point, I don't know if it's appropriate, I'm also curious, through the statute reading, I didn't get a clear understanding what is a nuisance dog versus a dangerous dog, but, um...
There's some, there's some interpretation and judgment required. Do you have any other, anything else you'd like to share?
Um, no, I think that's it.
Thank you. Any, any questions? No, okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, through you, can I just ask a question?
Yep. Yep, please, go ahead, Greg.
Oh, thank you. Mr. Shields, so when you say that you see the, the dog when you're out waiting for the bus, is, is the dog outside of its property when, when you see it, when you've had these interactions?
Yes, uh, it's, they live down the road where the bus stop is. So, normally, there's been a couple occasions, and again, I'm vaguing on memory of, of whether it's Daisy or their other dog, but sometimes they've walked, but definitely driven in the car. And then whenever, uh, Daisy's been at the bus stop, she's been on leash and fully controlled, um, and responded well to all the different, uh, young kids from kindergarten to second grade that she's interacted with there.
Okay, so when you say that the, um, the dog is at the bus stop, the dog is brought to the bus stop by the, by the owners? It's not just running loose?
Correct, correct, fully controlled, not, not loose, yes.
Great, thank you for that clarification. I have nothing further, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I think there was someone else who wanted to speak. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Jen Goldsberg. I live at 25 Lawson Road, and I have...
Worn in?
Yes, ma'am, I was. Um, I have met Daisy. I've been in her backyard. I've seen her off-leash. She never once jumped on me. She is a big girl, but she is also very sweet. She is a slobbery breed, but again, it just comes with, she wants to sniff you, she wants to touch you and see who you are. And so she was just being near me, and she was very friendly. I've introduced her to my children, who are both here tonight, and they're older children, but they're not huge bulky people. They're fine with her. And I've introduced her to my dog, who is, um, a lab mix. He's about 80 pounds. So, he is real big, not compared to Daisy, but they've interacted. And while I think the size difference is too much, and my, my guy's an old man, and he's not quite up to the little whippersnappers, um, they got on fine, okay? So, I feel like Daisy is a teenager, so like the behaviors I saw in the video and the not coming when called, these are teenage adolescent animal behaviors, where they're testing their boundaries and they're testing their limits. And it isn't uncommon for the, the kids to behave better for a stranger than they do for their own owners, and turn it into a game of chase and tag, but they'll come up to somebody else, no problem. So, I don't feel like Daisy, I don't even know what Daisy's voice sounds like until that video, because I've never heard her bark. Um, and even as a fellow dog owner, and I've been a dog owner of German Shepherds, I'm currently a lab mix, uh, English Shutters growing up, I've been around a variety of breeds. And all the behaviors I saw in those videos, on the first one, she kept her distance and was just alerting her owners that a stranger was nearby. Whether it was in the fence or out of the fence, Daisy doesn't understand the ba, the value of that fence. And like you said, she was on her property, just outside of the fenced area of the property. She was alerting her family that there were strangers in the area, and she was going to just keep an eye on them. But she kept a distance, and she wasn't trying to be aggressive. Being like, as you said, a big dog, she could inadvertently cause harm, but that wasn't the intent. And I think one other thing to bring in is, as Lindsay alluded to in her testimony, there, it has been a contentious relationship in the neighborhood. You heard in the video Evie swearing. That's her normal, everyday vocabulary. Okay, that wasn't just an alarmed patron in the, on the forest trail scared. She uses that language regularly. She yells at the children. She yells at everybody, swears.
Mr. Chair?
I'm, I'm not sure, I'm not sure that's particularly relevant to the dog's behavior.
The dog's behavior, she sees these people who are on the path yelling at her family, yelling and causing alarm in her family. And so she was watching these people who have caused distress in the past, walking freely in that area. So, I feel like Daisy was alerting her family that, hey, these people who have troubled you in the past are in the area, and I want you to know. But she kept her distance and she responded. But I really think that Daisy is a sweet, sweet dog who's in her adolescence, who is testing her boundaries, and as she ages and matures and calms, she's not going to be testing those boundaries anymore. And it takes kind of having been a dog owner to sort of see these nuances. Thank you very much.
Any questions from the board? Greg, do you have any questions?
Uh, no.
Okay, thank you very much.
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, do you see any further movement towards the mic?
Nope.
Okay, so, um, then at this time, um, just for the final, um, witness before you enter your deliberations, I'd like to ask Animal Control Officer Kirsten Herschler to approach. Um, good evening. Would you please state your full name and, um, position with the towel?
Yep, Kirsten Herschler, uh, Animal Control.
Um, thank you, Ms. Herschler. And so, um, you authored, uh, the two reports concerning the incidents in this matter?
Yes. Yes.
Yes, she did.
I think you need to just speak up a little bit.
Um, and prior to those, or aside from those two incidences, um, do you have any other reports or complaints concerning this dog?
Um, not as far as, uh, leaving the property. There's only been those two complaints. There have been a couple complaints regarding feces, um, on fences and next to fences, but nothing else as far as breaching the property.
Okay, but that, that's not a complaint about the behavior of the dog, correct?
No, no. This is very limited to this, to the neighborhood.
Um, and have, have you interacted with this dog at all?
I did meet Daisy, yes, twice, I believe.
Okay, and could you, um, describe your interactions with the dog for the board?
Um, I saw her through the fence, um, outside playing. She seemed like a very large dog, could definitely be intimidating to someone who even likes dogs, let alone someone who doesn't like dogs or know dogs. But, um, she seems like a really, just a big goofy dog. I didn't, you know, feel like there was any threat of anything. No behavior.
And, uh, have, have you had an opportunity to view the fence around the property?
So, I've seen the fence on several occasions. The last time I saw the fence was after the incident in the summertime. When I first saw the fence, it was all the orange fencing. Um, and they had said they were going to be working on it, which they did. And they began with the pallets. So, during that summer incident, there were some pallets up, but it wasn't fully complete. So, I have not been there since then. Um, from the photos, it looks like they've added the, uh, wire fencing to firm things up over there.
And based on the, the photos that you've seen in your prior viewing of the fence, if that fence fully enclosed the yard, um, in your experience, would it be sufficient to contain the dog?
I would have to, I wouldn't feel comfortable saying yes or no and without going there myself and seeing it and putting my hands on it, which I'm happy to do.
Thank you. Um, I have no further questions, Mr. Chair.
Questions from, from the board? Scott?
I guess, did you observe the dog on, on leash?
No, the dog was in the backyard.
I mean, I guess I'm kind of curious, just in terms of controlling, you know, I've, I've used a big dog, right? So, you can, it's like a harness, you can use a choker, it's various, various leashes. So, I just think in terms of meeting other dogs and playing and getting under control, is it on the best possible leash? And it sounds like you just don't know the answer to that one, so...
I believe that she walks her on a harness. Pretty sure that's what we discussed. I haven't had any issues with her being walked. Um, if anybody ever has, um, you know, concerns about dogs potentially getting off-leash, I always suggest double leashing.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks, Greg. I think we're good.
Okay, uh, thank you, um, Ms. Herschler. So, um, Mr. Chair, through you, I have nothing further. So, that would conclude the evidentiary reported portion of the proceeding, which means now the board can enter its, um, deliberation and decision phase. And as I said at the beginning, you have two questions. First is whether you wish to find that this dog is a nuisance or dangerous dog. Um, and if the answer to that is yes, what if any, um, requirements should be imposed in order to, um, make sure that the nuisance or danger is properly abated? Now, before I go into what the definitions of nuisance and dangerous are, I, I do want to make it clear to the board that, um, you're not required to find that the dog is a nuisance or a dangerous dog. If you don't find that the evidence fits either definition, um, you know, you can dismiss the complaint or, you know, even issue some sort of warning, but, you know, you're not necessarily required to make a finding simply because a complaint has been filed. Um, so with that being said, I'll, I'll start with the, the definition of dangerous dog, which is a dog that either, without justification, attacks a person or domestic animal, causing physical injury or death, or two, behaves in a manner that a reasonable person would believe poses an unjustified imminent threat of physical injury or death to a person or to a domestic-owned animal. Now, with regard to the first part, um, you have not heard any evidence to suggest that this dog has attacked another person or animal or causing physical injury or death. And, um, so it would be up to you to decide whether the, the incidents that have been described and that you saw in the video would cause a, a reasonable person to believe that they were under imminent threat of physical injury or death. Um, so before I go on, I don't know, Mr. Chair, do you want to discuss that? And then we can talk about what a nuisance is, or do you want to hear that, um, definition first?
Why don't we go ahead, why don't we go ahead with nuisance, Greg, and then we'll, we'll discuss if we think either definition applies?
I, I'm sorry, you cut out for one second there, Mr. Chair.
Uh, I was suggesting we go ahead and give the, the nuisance, uh, description as well, so we can move into deliberation here.
So, um, a nuisance, um, that's three parts. The first is that by excessive barking or other disturbance is a source of annoyance to a sick person residing in the vicinity. There's been no evidence to suggest that that is the case here. Um, two, by excessive barking, causing damage or other interference, a reasonable person would find such behavior disruptive to one's quiet and peaceful enjoyment, or has threatened or attacked livestock, a domestic animal or a person, but such threat or attack was not grossly disproportionate reaction under all the circumstances. So, the question was asked, uh, from a member of the audience earlier, what's the difference between nuisance and dangerous? And, um, it's mostly a, a matter of degree. You know, a, a dangerous dog is, is one who, um, either, you know, attacks someone with an intention to cause harm, um, either by biting them or knocking them down, um, you know, versus a, um, a nuisance dog that might be engaging in threatening behavior that, you know, could turn dangerous, but, you know, is not an intended or a severe attack. Um, so, you know, those are sort of the two, you know, options that you're looking at here. When you look at these incidents, you know, what, what you see, you know, one version of events was that, that, um, you know, the dog was acting in a, a threatening manner, that it was growling, um, and that it was approaching, uh, these people and these other dogs in an aggressive way. And what you saw in the video was that the dog, um, you know, jumped on the, on the other dog at one instance, but then in another instance, it was calm. When it was put on the leash, it sort of lunged at either the person or the other dog while they were walking away. But then the other testimony you heard about the same incident was that the dog was just playing and wasn't really trying to, to hurt anyone. Um, so, you know, I think that's sort of what you have... Um, so, you know, I think that's sort of what you have to deliberate and decide, you know, how you want to interpret the testimony and the evidence that you heard and to decide whether, you know, that is, is nuisance behavior, dangerous behavior, or neither, just a dog being playful.
Okay, thanks, Greg. So, let me, uh, let me hear from the board, whether people think one or the other or both definitions apply, or neither.
So, um, clearly a lot dangerous, absolutely a lot dangerous. Um, you know, nuisance is someone that I have a holder, but, um, I don't see it as nuisance either, frankly. Um, it's tails wagging, it's going to play, it's a big dog. I guess what I would say though is I do have a, a dog who, um, you know, she is moderately territorial. If you come to her house, she'll bark at you. Most folks understand that's just what dogs do, but they don't care. I do have a friend with a daughter who's afraid of dogs, and so we make sure that, um, our dog is different part of the house when she shows up. So, um, I can see where a dog that size, um, and it matches drool, you know, but if you don't know that, it's, you know, uh, it is a, a sight to see. So I guess my, my comment, my own thought would be just that it's not dangerous or, or nuisance. I would really suggest that that you gotta be fenced in because your neighbor's got a rational fear of a large dog that she doesn't understand.
Thanks, John.
I concur. I, I don't think it fits either nuisance or dangerous.
I'm a no for either. It's not a nuisance dog, not dangerous.
I don't think it's a nuisance or a dangerous dog, uh, either.
So I, I would agree, and Greg, I guess, um, given if, if we do decide that neither definition applies, but we do think it's important that the owner takes the responsibility of having an intact fence seriously. Is, is it possible for us, for instance, to issue maybe a warning and ask for an inspection of, of the fence, just to confirm the fence is sort of intact and up to the task?
I'm not even comfortable issuing a warning. I don't think this dog is a nuisance or a danger.
Yeah. I was thinking, so I, I, I agree. I was thinking a warning related to the fact that the fence was not adequate to the task, but I understand, not the dog, I, I don't think the dog.
I was not suggesting that they have to have a fence. I said, as, as good neighbors, they should have a fence.
Yeah.
I would not be inclined to mandate it, just suggest, you know, as a friend suggestion, that that would be a good thing to do is just be good neighbors, that's all.
Okay. I understand. Any, any other, any other feedback for this group?
I mean, it seems to me that they made a good faith, um, attempt to keep improving the fence. So I, I think they're being responsible dog owners at this point. At least that's what the evidence that I've seen so far suggests.
Okay. So it sounds like this board is satisfied that neither definition applies and that the, the current owner is acting in good faith. So is there, is there a specific finding we need to reach or vote we need to take? Greg?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So if that's, that does sound like it's the consensus of the board. And so, um, the motion that would be in order would be a motion to dismiss the complaint.
Should they close the public hearing first?
No, not yet.
Okay.
Um, the, the board should, should vote its finding, then close the public hearing.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. It's unanimous, thank you.
And now I'll move to close the public hearing.
In a second?
Second.
Yeah.
Favor? Okay. Thank you so much. Greg, we're all set with that?
Yes, that's it. The, the hearing is, is now concluded.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for those here for part of that. We appreciate your participation. Our eight o'clock item is the joint meeting with the Recycling Commission to discuss the comparison of solid waste and recycling proposals received by Waste Management and E.L. Harvey and authorize the town manager to enter into negotiations and sign a contract with the selected vendor. Why don't we first welcome the Recycling Commission? So please, if you'd like to, Ken, if you'd like to come to the mic?
Thank you for having us here, and we're, we're very glad to do it. We're very happy to review the agreements that are the presentations that have been provided by a couple of vendors. And we did have a, a, a serious discussion on it back on the 10th. And we sent our findings to you in our, in our recommendations. I know we still have some questions to ask on it, but what we did say is, you probably don't, do you want me to reiterate what I've provided to you?
No, if you've provided in the packet, we've, we've definitely read it. So summary, Greg.
And it is in the packet. Is that correct, Kristen?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So that's in the packet. So you have that. So we, we, um, we are very familiar with the current, um, provider of recycling services as well as the current provider of waste management services. So as you know, we looked at one, the, um, the town has looked at a possibility of a company that could do both, and, um, certainly we have a late entry with Harvey, but Harvey seemed to come in and make a proposal to us that we thought was satisfactory. And as we compared the two proposals, we voted as a commission unanimously on that question to support, you know, switching to, awarding it to E.L. Harvey.
Great, thank you. Any, any questions for the Recycling Commission from the board?
Um, the, at the end of the presentation that we had in our last session, there was some decision makings, the last slide, and one of them was the number of barrels for trash, I think. Did your commission have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, we, um, we think that it's the, will behoove the town to redo, in the, in, at some point, to reduce the amount of trash that is being accepted. Right now, it's three barrels. It's not three barrels everywhere. Um, we feel that, that it is our responsibility to reduce waste. That's all part of the, the paradigm that we're in right now, and it's not necessarily doing it with the excess that we're accepting. So we know that needs to be considered. But we also know that with E.L. Harvey and having their proposal for how to manage the waste collection, we do have an opportunity down the road to do something to directly affect that, whether it's, you know, pay as you, pay as you throw or, or some mechanism to ratchet that in. So that's one of the benefits there, and that'll give us an opportunity to do something within the contract. So it's, it's a, it's a major issue. So we would, we would be, we'd recommend that we consider reducing that amount of trash. And we understand the passion related to that, but, you know, that, that's, the reality is that we need to do something.
Yep. So, I'm sorry, good, John?
I have a question about, uh, if we go to Harvey, said they use their transfer station in Pittsburgh?
They, there's an option within the contract, either using their transfer station for the, for the weight, for the solid waste, or continuing with our Covanta contract. So they've given us pricing for both models. So we have one, it's, it's, um, what's it, $36,000 or something different. If we go to Pittsburgh and send this trash on a train out of state, you know, and, and deal with those related consequences, or we continue with Covanta within our current model. So it's not, it's not, it's a decision that has to be made which way you want to go.
And the reason that question is, um, does Harvey own the transfer station, or do they have a contract?
That I can't answer. I think they own it, but I can't, I can't answer that responsibly.
I think they own it as well, but I can't say that with 100% confidence.
My concern there is that we were talking about renewing the contract that we have, and I would be concerned as to, uh, what kind of contract they have and how long that would last, because we're, we're talking about a five-year commitment.
Well, they've, they've been around over 100 years, so they're, they're a very reliable company. I only know them from a past life that I had, um, as Verizon Environmental Management, and we dealt with them, and they were among the more credible entities we've dealt with, and they've lasted the test of time. That was some 30 years ago. So, um, I don't know that that's the issue, but you do have as one of the pieces to the, to the, um, to the program here is you do have that comparison between trucking it away and sending it out of sight or sending it to Covanta, in which case the Covanta contract that you're going to be talking about renewing or planning for future, um, is going to become relevant. So they will do whichever we want, correct, Kristen?
Yes, correct. So there's just a cost difference, and Dan can help us with that. I believe it's about $150,000 over five years. More to go to Covanta, less to go to their Pittsburgh transfer station and have it railed out of state. So I know that that's always been a, a concern of some, why do we want to rail our waste out of state? We should have it stay in our state. Harvey also has a slight concern over Covanta's wait times between one and three hours. Traditionally, it has been that if they go directly to their transfer station, they haven't seen a wait time. So, um, there are pros and cons to both options.
Any other questions from the board for Ken? So we, we really appreciate taking a close look that you did and appreciate the recommendation. One of the budget task force recommendations is something we've talked about before, which is some sort of education strategy, potentially a compost strategy that will help us reduce our, our tonnage of, of waste. So, um, not tonight, but at another time, we'd really like to hear suggestions that you have, because you've been thinking about this problem a long time, and, uh, I think it's something that needs to be part of our strategy as well.
We'd be glad to be part of that solution.
Okay. Great. So we'll, we'll arrange another time, and if, if there's a plan, we'd love to understand what, uh, what we can do to help solve this problem, because it's, it's a big problem.
Okay, that's great. Well, thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
So tonight, do you need a vote on the contract? And then do you need a vote on the Covanta versus the transfer station?
Correct.
Why don't we do the second part first? Feelings from the board, 140 or 150,000 dollars versus this issue about?
Am I correct in the dollar amount?
Uh, it's just 158,000 dollars.
158,000 dollars.
Over five years.
Any, any opinions about whether it's important to continue with Covanta or whether we should take the savings and run? What's, uh, what's the feeling of the board?
I would have said it was run, but.
I, I'm not, I have not been part of some closely held position that we should keep our trash in state. I, I don't know if others are aware of that being a community issue or a passion.
There's also, there's just a hand on Zoom. I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Okay.
I don't know if you're taking public comments or not.
Yeah, yeah, please, please.
So, Simran, I'm going to allow you to talk. I apologize if I'm mispronouncing your name.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yep, sounds good.
Yes. So I'm Sriman from 1 Primrose Lane, Westford. I'm part of the Clean Energy Committee as well as nominated, uh, member of the waste, recycling and waste management committee as well. I did hear about, uh, the plan to discuss further, perhaps in the next meeting, opportunities. But what I would like to share here is we have a lot of opportunities in terms of recycling. I guess, uh, in our town, we are, uh, not, you know, recycling as much as potentially possible, and it's convenient to drop everything into the trash, and that's where, uh, you know, the three barrels and, uh, other things are coming up as well. But if we tend to recycle more, then obviously there's a potential to, you know, resolve this, uh, problem going forward. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your participation and excellent point. So certainly part of the education strategy is to take full advantage of recycling. So thank you for, for raising that. So back to the question about which transfer station versus Covanta, any, any strong feelings? Is there a, Scott, Scott says he'd prefer to go with the lower cost option.
I, I would prefer to go with the lower cost as well.
I mean, for the environmental standpoint, I'm more worried about the volume than I am where it ends up, because, I mean, it's, it's, yeah.
It's, it's incinerated at Covanta, so that's sort of the worst possible case in terms of, you know, energy use and waste.
I think Pittsburgh.
Okay. Uh, so it sounds like we want to go ahead and, you're looking for a vote to accept the...
Hey, Tom, I think there are some comments from the audience.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep. Please welcome, welcome Emily, and if you could just state your name and your address.
Emily Teller, 9 Texas Road. Two questions. I'm a little concerned about shipping it out of state, because I don't know what happens to it there, where it goes, or, I mean, you know, we know that it's incinerated with certain filters and stuff in Andover for the first company. My sense is to go with the lower cost, obviously, for the town. But secondly, I thought there were some concerns with the, having to change all of our recycling barrels if we went with the first company, and this is keeping the recycling barrels with the second company?
Speak to that.
Go for it.
Sure. So with waste management, they were proposing to own all of the trash and recycling toters. It would either be a 64 gallon or a 32 gallon trash toter and a 96 gallon recycling toter. So there would be trade outs of those toters. With Harvey, uh, they are proposing manual collection, but their trucks will have arms on them, so if you currently have a toter at your residence, they would be able to pick up that toter. They also offer residents to purchase toters for trash and recycling directly from Harvey. So we ultimately could go to a man, uh, automated collection over time if residents choose to purchase those toters.
Okay. I can't possibly deal with a 96 gallon anything, so I just wanted to throw that out there. I'm 75. So I also like being able to keep what we have and eventually purchase ones over time if they're not sufficient. I also would encourage residents to recycle. It's so easy. Everything's mixed. It's just putting it in one place and then dumping it in the toter. But I, could you find out where the trash goes, just for information and how it's processed? I think that's an, um, we need to make an intelligent decision. You don't have to do it before you vote, I think, but at some point, I think it would be a good idea for residents to know that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Emily. Is there some?
Chris Erickson, 41 Kaiser Road, a member of the Recycling Commission. I, I guess I would just like to encourage the board to think about how Westford's made a, a commitment to try to get to, uh, net zero, you know, carbon emissions by, is it 2050? And the idea of putting our trash on a train, shipping it, just, it seems to go against that. You know, it's not, maybe, maybe we're not held to those emissions or that fuel that's being used, but it just, in, you know, in theory, goes against what we're trying to do as, in this town, to become better environmental citizens and change the way we do things. So just please consider that.
That may be true. I mean, uh, the train is the most efficient way to move anything compared to trucks. So, you know, trucks idling for three hours at Covanta party isn't good either, so I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with them. I'm not saying, but it's not a slam dunk that either solution is, is the best for carbon neutral.
I, I think we should probably take a look at the carbon footprint of both and, and know what decision we're making. So I think that's a good suggestion.
Thank you.
So we'll ask, we'll ask Kristen to help us do that.
Yeah, so we certainly, we certainly don't have to vote this evening if you don't want to on Covanta versus Harvey's transfer station. If you want to vote and you feel ready, please do so, but I, I would recommend a vote on what hauler we're going to use so we can start ramping up that program.
Understood. Please.
Chris Quinn, Texas Road. I would just like to say, whatever you guys did to get another contract possible, that would allow people not to have to buy all of these containers and lug them, I really appreciate all your effort if, you know, hopefully it will be a, a lower cost thing. But on behalf of seniors, which I am, and disabled, which I'm not yet, um, you know, our trash this week, and it is almost every week, is a little bag, because we try to conserve and keep it as small as possible. And the mere thought of having to buy or whatever and lug something down a driveway really long and so forth was just keeping me up nights. So I really appreciate it, and I'm sure there are probably hundreds of people in town that also appreciate finding someone who will let us, you know, go with a, a status quo with some of the stuff. Thank you.
That's good. We will pass along your appreciation to Christine, Christine Nigre, and, and town staff that worked hard to make that happen. Okay. So first, why don't we go ahead and, and take a vote on the hauler? And then we can decide if we're ready to take a vote on the transfer station or want to wait until we get more information. So...
So I'll move that we authorize our town manager to enter into negotiations, um, with Harvey to haul our trash.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor? Excellent. And what's the, what's the opinion of the board? Is there any more? I think it'd be useful for us to understand the carbon implications. Do we want to get that first, or?
Well, also where it's going too would be helpful.
Okay.
I mean, you know, I don't...
So it sounds like you'd prefer to wait, since we don't have to make that decision?
We don't have to. I'd rather have the information.
Okay.
Likely we'll have to make it by November, because to finalize the contract, we would have to...
Okay.
If we are going with, if we are going with Harvey's method, that will be ingrained in the contract with Harvey.
Okay. Okay. So it sounds like we'll address that next time with whatever info we get in the meantime.
Okay.
Fantastic. And thank you to our colleagues with the Recycling Commission for being here tonight. Next up is a review next steps from the Budget Task Force update, and specifically, I think we want to just clarify whether we feel like we can give, uh, budget planning guidance to, to town staff and sort of, you know, set them forward with clear guidance. So what we discussed in the, in the joint meeting was the idea of preparing the base budget that fits within the normal Prop 2 and 1/2 and, um, new... Prop 2 and 1/2 and new growth revenue constraints. We have to have that planned because we may end up executing on that plan. And then also the idea of crafting another plan that wouldn't have that level of service reductions and would include some element of an override. What exactly that is would be the result of discussion in the budget process over the next, you know, several months. So let me just stop there. We didn't have a chance to deliberate on that. Is, what's the feeling of the board about that approach? In terms of guidance to give the...
I understand the two approaches. So one is prepare a budget that may include cuts to services but fits within the available funds that we expect to have.
Yeah, definitely would.
Will include cuts.
I think we've got to do that.
And then the next option is to keep the level of service as is, but then understand how much of a difference that may be and may require an override.
That's exactly right. So just very specifically, one set of guidance we could give Town Staff is to prepare that first budget we talked about and indicate what the cuts would look like. And they would be substantial. The other would be, it wouldn't, I don't think we would give them the direction that it has to be level services exactly, but it would be a plan that probably would preserve many of the services that we currently enjoy. And then part of that plan would indicate what the override amount would need to be to pull that off. And we would be negotiating throughout kind of, you know, what efficiencies can we incorporate? Are there new revenue sources we want to consider? Are there service trade offs that other towns don't provide? We just maybe don't need to provide them? That's a reasonable question we could have. All of that would be happening while we're crafting these budgets. But we would land ultimately with two options to present to the taxpayer.
So here's my concern. I mean, I think is that if, what budget we bring to town meeting in March, I mean, we have four months to do this.
Right.
And my concern is, can we do this in four months? Okay. And if, for example, we decide to go with an override, then that override has to be, you know, on the, again, has to be prepared for March and then for the ballot in May. So I'm just, I'm real concerned about timing, Tom, and whether we've got enough time to do this.
Yeah, so a good, thank you for bringing that up. A good portion of the discussion in joint chairs was what exactly is the implication of that and timing? When do we have to have a draft version of these two plans so we can have suitable time to react to it? And so Kristen and Chris Chu are working on this timeline that would have each date that we would need to hit in order to get there. And I don't know if you can give an outline of it or if that's something we should give you more time and come back to and present at the next meeting?
No, Dan and Chris and I actually have worked on it between yesterday and today. We think that it is doable. So for town meeting, we would bring two budgets to town meeting for approval. One would be the cut budget to meet the proposition 2 and 1/2. And then one would be an override budget if the board chooses to place an override on the warrant and on the ballot. We then would be piecing together how the budget hearings go in January, how departments would be presenting to the finance committee related to that, and then backing up even further, how I would be presenting the budget to you on December 12. That would be two budgets, basically, that I'd be presenting to you. So finance for the town side and the superintendent of finance for the school side are on board with the timeframe. We've been talking about this for, you know, a few weeks just internally of what if. And we do feel that we can make the timeframe work.
Okay.
And that's really, that's really why we started the budgeting process with the departments back in August, because we knew we'd most likely have to go back to them at this timeframe to ask for additional adjustments.
Chris?
So I'm assuming since as part of the Budget Task Force, your co-chair is the chair of the school committee, they're on board with this plan as well? Because, you know, if we're going to go and potentially cut the school budget, they're going to face a lot of questions. So they're good to go with this idea?
Yeah, this is all synced up. And we, one thing we talked about is basically ensuring that we're working as a team and it's a joint presentation. And it's not, they have their own budget override and we have this other one and we're not in agreement. The idea is that we're going to sync this up.
Yeah. So I don't know if the school committee in whole has had those conversations, but the chair and the vice chair of the school committee have had those conversations with us and the superintendent.
Yep, John?
Is that second option going to embrace everything that you have as far as the shortage in the Budget Task Force? You've identified six to eight, or is it going to be some, or could it be something in between Prop, you know, within Prop 2 and 1/2? Here's what you identified as the need.
Right.
Or the requirement. Is that going to be the second option? Or is it going to be thoughtfully maybe somewhere in between?
I think it's going to be calibrated in between. And the thought experiment we had, and maybe we'll actually use this in budget communication, is you'd have the Prop 2 and 1/2, new growth typical constraint. You'd have a level service budget, which would be basically continuing the same number of police officers, the same amount of firefighters, you know, the same things we're doing now, plus these big cost driver increases like energy and school bus and all the things we talked about in the report. And then what we're going to land on is probably in between those two. It's probably going to have some service reductions. But, I mean, the Budget Task Force did identify some places that were outliers in terms of what we're spending. We can decide whether we want to continue to do that or not. So short answer is it'll be somewhere in between these guide rails, I think, is what the proposal that we'll land on would be.
There's a lot of things that we were looking at are kind of hopeful in some ways.
Yep.
And then there's the stuff that we can fight into and...
Right. There's some stuff we could decide to do right now. And then there's some stuff that will probably take a few years. Economic development's a good example, high impact, but it's going to take us a couple of years to get the report and act on it. Scott?
Does the joint boards include the moderator?
The town moderator?
Yeah.
No.
It is not, but good.
Well, I was thinking that we're going to come to town meeting for the first time in my memory with two budgets. And she has to try to run that. And I can see amendments to take from this piece from that one and put it into the other one. So I'd like to get her input as to how...
Sure.
How that, I mean, not input, but, you know, advice as to how this might work because we could have a real mess, again, in terms of process.
Sure. We can definitely include her once we're a little bit further down the road.
Okay. Kristen, do you think we need a vote on this? Or do you feel like the guidance, I think we're in consensus.
I think we have consensus that the board is in consensus with supporting Town Staff in moving forward with this two-budget opportunity.
Yep.
And we're kind of looking to go, you know, dot to the max, right, of what the Budget Task Force stated, but somewhere down a little bit further.
Okay.
Just one thought. So if, like, if we have this discussion at annual town meeting, plus we have a potential gun bylaw that comes, you know, we're going to have a lot of people, right? So does that mean that we should even be thinking about March is not viable because we're going to have to hold this outside? And if we do, does that cause problems with the May ballot question and...
So I've had conversations with the land use director on this. And we can definitely talk about this at a different meeting. But I think if a firearms bylaw comes back, we may want it on its own special meeting.
I see.
We also have the MBTA communities. That needs to be voted on in March to meet our guidelines with the state. So I think that...
That has to be March. They can't...
We'll, our safety net is fall, but we don't want to go there. We have to adopt it by December of '24. So my recommendation to the board would be if the board wants to bring a firearms bylaw back, the planning board wants to bring it back, and/or a citizen's petition, that it most likely should go on a special on its own. And maybe with like one or two ancillary things that are absolutely necessary or that shouldn't be necessary. And then we proceed with our annual town meeting in March with the budget conversations with MBTA communities, our standard annual town meeting actions.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thanks for asking.
Okay. Good. I think we are good on that item. Next up is old new business. Review and potentially act design Drew Farmhouse, CPA, affordable housing. Now, from our conversation earlier, it sounded like we were all still kind of landing on the language. There's still some items we're discussing. So tonight is more like an update with a goal of maybe getting the documents for, of vote next meeting.
Right. So my understanding is Ms. Hardy and Ms. Robbins are here just to provide you with an update. Town Council and Ms. Robbins have been working back and forth on the CPA grant agreement document, the affordable housing regulatory agreement, and the historic preservation agreement. So if we give them a few minutes just to give you an update, but no vote is required this evening.
Great. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, Attorney Melissa Robbins from the Lockham and Murrellon Robbins. I'm here tonight for Drew Farmhouse, Inc. Ellen Hardy is with me. I have good news for the board. I'm not asking you to act tonight. But Town Council and I do need a little bit of direction. Just by way of update, as you know, CPA funds were approved at town meeting. We have three documents we need this board to approve. The historic preservation restriction, I think that one is actually going to be the easiest. I've already redlined that document. I'm not asking anybody to review it tonight. We use the Parish Center for the Arts model, and I really don't think there's a lot of contention there. We already have input from your Historic Commission, which we've included in that document. I'm pretty safe saying that Ms. Klein and I are pretty close to done with that document. The regulatory agreement, I have one question. I'm also going to have it in the grant agreement. This is a question from your council as well. There's one section in the agreement which council has added in which states, this is the Reader's Digest version, if the town should have to sue Drew Farmhouse, Inc. in order to enforce the restriction and they win, that the town will ask Drew Farmhouse, Inc. to reimburse the town. We're fine with that. I'd ask Town Council to make it reciprocal, which means that if the town sues Ms. Hardy and the town should lose, that they should reimburse the town, the town should have to reimburse Ms. Hardy for her expenses. That's the general contract way to write these type of provisions. But Town Council can't make that decision. So I'm asking that for the board, if we can make the adjustment to make it reciprocal in both the grant agreement and the regulatory agreement. That's question number one. Mr. Chair, I don't know if you want to discuss that one first.
And you do want feedback on these questions?
We need feedback on these two questions just so that Ms. Klein and I can finish the drafting.
What's the feeling of the board on the...
Which one are you talking about?
This is the reciprocal...
Both the grant and the regulatory agreement, council's put that in and it's just in one direction.
What she's saying is that whoever prevails has to pay the other side's attorney's fees.
Right. And the way that it reads right now is only, that only if the town prevails do they get their fees paid, but not reciprocal. So my suggestion is we either strike that provision or make it reciprocal. But that's the board's decision, not me or Town Council's.
Yeah, I guess, well, opinions?
What's the standard practice?
The standard practice is either everybody pays their own fees or it's reciprocal.
Okay.
I guess I sort of like everyone pay their own a little bit better in this case.
I would...
That's a budgeting decision that we can make. I mean, we can decide that we're going to spend our money, but the idea that...
I would think in this case, everybody should just bear their own costs.
It's like that's the simpler...
Yeah.
Wonderful. Okay, so that...
Let me just get a visual here. Are you okay with that? Okay, thanks.
It's an easy adjustment to make. And the other one is actually, comes by a way of good news, is that we no longer need this money for acquisition. So the Drew Farmhouse, Inc. is actually going to front the acquisition and use this money secondarily. This will help greatly in finalizing this document. It gives us a little breathing room so we can actually close this transaction and then use the money that was appropriated by the town for the purposes of purely historical preservation restriction and then the affordable housing restriction. So in the grant agreement, there was a note in the margin from your council saying, what is the issue with the note in the mortgage? Now, it's my understanding that that provision was in place because the board was uncomfortable that they were going to acquire the property and there'd be no protection for their assets if it was being used for purchase and not being used for the intended purpose, which was for historic preservation and affordable housing restriction. Since acquisition's off the table, I suggested to council that we no longer need a note and a mortgage because now the affordable housing restriction will be in place before a dollar is spent. And also, the historic preservation restriction will be in place before a dollar is spent. So the town granting of money is protected through those restrictions in perpetuity. So the second question to the board is, is the mortgage and note necessary now that we are not using these funds for acquisition?
Things of the board?
I wouldn't think so. I mean, if you violate the historic or the affordable housing restrictions, then we're going to sue you.
That's correct.
I know you won't, but to put it bluntly.
Exactly.
You know, so I, if they're not, if we have, if it is, do we document somewhere that these funds are only going, I haven't read the, I've read it once or tw- I haven't read it carefully. I breezed through it. But have we documented that these funds are not going to be used for acquisition?
They will be. So there's one section of, there will be in the CPA document, there's a portion where Katie and I have put in the margin about reimbursement or acquisition that we were waiting for direction. We would actually now rework that paragraph that acquisition would be taken off the table. So this would be purely for payments for the affordability and historic preservation improvements to the structure only.
Okay.
It makes everybody's life a lot easier and takes acquisition and the town owning the prop, using the money to own the property out of the equation. So now we're not protecting an equity interest. Okay. I think that makes sense.
I'm okay with that, too.
Yep.
John?
I got a couple of questions. Some of it's just kind of housekeeping stuff. You say regulatory agreement. Shouldn't that read affordable housing regulatory agreement?
That's what it is. The regulatory agreement is the colloquial word for the, but that's what it is. It's a protection for the workforce, affordable housing.
Well, and just say developers awarded the sum, 1.4 million in funds available under the Act. That, you know, it's been funded. It hasn't been awarded yet.
Correct.
Okay.
Will be awarded...
It says was awarded.
Oh, was.
That's indicating that the town meeting awarded it to you. And the town meeting did not award it. That hasn't happened yet. I mean, this is the way this reads.
No, the town meeting awarded it on October 16.
Awarded the sum.
Awarded the sum. And then when the agreement is in place, then the funds can be distributed.
And it says here, it's limited to the five workforce affordable units. That's what this is for. And this particular part, the affordable housing part, is about $1 million. And then the other one is $450,000. So this talks about the whole thing.
Right.
It's part of the affordable housing, which is really a million. What happened, you talk about Habitat Humanity. I read somewhere that part of this has been sold to Habitat Humanity?
No. So the, we haven't figured out the structure with Habitat for Humanity. And I'm not asking you to look at the CPA agreement tonight. But what we've talked about with council is that we will actually, you'll have a separate regulatory agreement once we figure out exactly what Habitat for Humanity unit is going to be. Will it be one three-bedroom, one two-bedroom? Will it be one one-bedroom? Will it be priced at whatever number? That will all be fleshed out in a separate regulatory agreement for the structure in the barn.
So how does Habitat Humanity take over that? Do they own that as part of your plan?
Generally speak...
Will Habitat Humanity own that piece of it?
Yep.
As part of your plan?
Yes. They will take complete control of that. Generally, when you have projects of touch like that, it's done through a condominium setup. So the piece of the property would still stay as one. And then Habitat Humanity would buy that unit and then sell it.
They would buy the unit. They pay for the unit.
Yes. So they, they would, they would be donated to Habitat and then Habitat sells the unit to a new homeowner.
Donated to Habitat. They're not going to buy it then.
They're going to buy the unit.
Right.
We will still, Drew Farmhouse, Inc. will own the 2.1 acres. We will own the entire property. We will own the barn. But the first floor unit in the barn will be condominiumized and that will be owned by the Habitat family that is qualifying for that.
That was the other question about where you had in that one document. You had condominium was carved out there.
Yes, that's why.
And that's, and that implies ownership. And it implies a transfer of funds. So where do those funds go? I mean, somebody's paying for that condo, right?
Well, no, not exact, that's not the way Habitat actually works. So Habitat for Humanity actually constructs tho, that unit within the barn. The person, the family that is selected to be the Habitat family actually has to come in during the construction process and work on their home for construction. The rest of the work for Habitat Humanity is all done through volunteer services and donations and kind of labor and other materials. And then the property is transferred to the new owner at a 0% interest loan, which is also held by Habitat for Humanity. So there is a sale of the unit. It's generally at a very, very small price, which I can't tell to the board right now. And then there is an ownership in that unit for the Habitat family. That's the Habitat way.
There's no, no funds will, will, Habitat's not going to pay, write you a check for that.
No. No, no, no. This would be a donation of the property to Habitat. And then Habitat follows their process and choosing their Habitat family. And then they go through their procedure.
That's going to be separate from the affordable housing.
That's correct.
Absolutely. They're two separate things. The affordable housing component, John, is in the farmhouse. And that's where the five apartments will be. And those will be operated and managed by the Drew Farmhouse, Inc. The barn, first floor, that will be the area that Habitat does. That's completely separate.
So the affordable housing requirements won't transfer, you're going to have a deed here somewhere. And those requirements going to, you know, the historical preservation, of course, is with the shell of the building.
Correct.
But the affordable housing part would transfer over into the deed that goes to Habitat for Humanity?
There will be a new affordable housing restriction just for that unit. So in the CPA agreement, we actually have two bullets. The first bullet... The first bullet says there'll be a regulatory agreement for the five workforce affordable housing that Ellen is building within the main structure and there'll be a separate regulatory agreement for any units that Habitat creates in the barn structure. So ultimately for this property, there'll be two regulatory agreements, one that covers the affordability of the units in the home and one that covers the affordability of the Habitat unit itself, because they're different. They'll be different. They'll be priced different. They'll be sold differently.
So, so once, excuse me, I just.
That's okay.
I'm on roll here. Anyway. Once, once we, the money is put into it by the town.
Yep.
Then the value of that property is gonna change. It's gonna change from the $1 million that purchase price. It's gonna change to another number.
Right.
And that's gonna be an accrual in equity and that the town is paying for. And what I was looking for was something that says that if, if the town, if this is, you know, it's going with the nonprofit right now, but if it's refinanced or is sold to where equity is acquired or taken out of the project, that the town should either share in that or have some say in that.
Well, just so you know, that these restrictions will stay there in perpetuity. So your, the money that the town has now given to the project is for two things. One is for historic preservation restriction, which will be completed, and one is for the creation of affordable homes, which will be completed. So at that point, the obligations of Ms. Hardy to the town in using the funds is complete. Then those restrictions will go along with the property. Will the property increase in value over time? Absolutely. But those restrictions will also stay with the property over time, which greatly reduces the, the overall value of the property and saleability. So there is no equity here that the town would gain in their funds. Their funds are being used for the stated purpose, which are protected through these two documents. There is no further equity for the town to lose or gain after the project's completed. They fulfilled their obligations. The town's obligations will be fulfilled and Ellen's obligations.
There is for whoever owns it or the.
No, there's, the value of the property might go up, but the restrictions stay forever.
I understand that.
Okay. So there is no, other than an increase in value of the property, there is no equity to be gained. The reduction in the value is there forever because the restrictions will stay with the property forever.
That's, that's true for any property. Anything, any housing subsidized, whether it be Choice or this, it's all the same.
Right.
Yeah, I, I had sort of a similar concern, but I'm, I think I'm beyond it. Yep.
I'm gonna switch topics. I mean, I'm gonna move from John. So looking at the regulatory agreement, Melissa, I just had a couple of things.
Yep.
Paragraph 21 is titled governing law, but if you look at paragraph 21, you're talking about that this is the entire agreement and can be only amended in writing.
Sure. And I can tell you that most of that was my numbering issue and I've had a couple of issues going back between the red lines. So I apologize and I'll fix that heading.
No problem. Also, I, I would like to see an integration clause in the agreement, which basically for folks says that this is the final agreement and anything that was discussed or promised before does not hold.
Happy to add that.
You need a governing law? You do need a governing law provision and it should be governed under the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and also a jurisdictional proceed, clause that jurisdiction, all parties agree that jurisdiction is exclusive to the Massa- to a competent court in Massachusetts.
Happy to add those, all three clauses.
Just, I, I have another oddball question, but are you through with the questions you had for us?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut.
No, those were my, those were my, those were the three points I wanted to see in the agreement.
So this may be my reading or being tired when I read it, but I, I understand what the qualification metrics are for someone to be eligible for this workforce housing. So presumably you, you make this unit available and there are three or four people or something that are eligible. How is the final selection made? Is that made by lottery or what's the mechanism?
Yes.
That takes the qualified people and selects one?
It's a lottery. So it's ju- it's done like every other affordable housing project. The only parameter that changes here is the area median income. We're actually gonna hire a third-party lottery group like we do with every other affordable housing project. They will be the one that does the marketing. They will be the one that solicits the people. They will be the one that makes the selections of the proper parties and then they'll go to Drew Farmhouse, Inc. and then they will see that the proper selections have been made. They'll certify them and then they'll become residents.
Okay. And it's specifically in the document that way?
That's in section 10.
Absolutely.
It was there.
Section 10.
And just one more point to that, Mr. Chair. The actual marketing agreement, when we have the third-party marketing will actually come to this board. So you'll see that marketing agreement even before it goes out. You'll see exactly how it happens. And the 70% local preference is part of that as well.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And does that third-party monitoring, it might be in there and I missed it. Do they continue to monitor so that they make sure that the folks who are in there remain eligible? I mean, if somebody inherits, you know, half a million dollars or something.
So it's, it's in there, but this one's a little bit different. There's not a third-party monitoring agent right off the bat like there would be for an affordable housing restriction because these aren't going on the subsidized housing inventory. This actual restriction has an annual certification that Drew Farmhouse, Inc. will have to make with all the qualifying information to the town on a yearly basis. And then at any point, if the town does not want to monitor, then we can go out for a third-party monitor after that. So this, it's a self-certification, not a third-party certifier coming in.
But it's still the obligation of the Drew Farms.
Yes.
Incorporated to make sure that the folks who are living there qualify every single year and follow up on that.
And there's an annual compliance provision in the document. Yes.
Scott?
One question is really easy when it's not. So it's a really easy one. I presume the Habitat unit would count towards the SHI for the town?
Not necessarily. And I, the only reason I'll say maybe not is because sometimes through the Habitat selection process, you don't go through a lottery. There's a family selection program that the families go through. So there's not always a lottery. And I only say maybe because I sit on the board for Habitat for Humanity. I know a lot about Habitat for Humanity. Sometimes you deal with former D H C D E O H L C and you get an answer of yes, this can be certified on your SHI, even though they'll give you a lottery waiver and other times it's no. 90% of the time it is, so it's a sometimes yes.
I thought it was an easy one.
That was not an easy, this one's the easy one.
Well, it probably is an easy, easy. So, you know, we look, there's, there's a, it's like a public-private partnership, right? So there's a Drew Farmhouse, Inc. piece. There's a town piece in terms of money that gets, you know, makes this thing possible. I think also that there's an element of community fundraising, which I appreciate because we want the community buy-in. But I guess, where's that, how does that money, where's that money go? Is it, is it something that is, you know, a net improvement to the property somehow? Is it?
To buy a building.
Yeah. You'll get to see that actually because before we spend a dollar of your money, we have to present a full budget as part of the CPA agreement. So you're gonna get to see what money is coming from our private funding, what money is coming from other funding, what money is coming from CPA. We have to put this within all one budget form that this board has to review and approve, either through a third-party agent or this board itself. So all of those questions will be answered.
Like I guess the question is, if the money comes in, does it offset the Drew Farmhouse, Inc. investment? Does it offset both?
It would ju- it would probably go towards the mortgage that Drew Farmhouse, Inc. is now going to have towards the acquisition price. But like I keep pointing out to Ms. Hardy, these houses are an onion. I don't have to tell her that. And most likely, the additional funds are gonna be needed and the budget will be amended over time when problems arise and we go through the House. So the budget, even though it's an initial budget, will evolve over time and you'll see when those funds come in and there'll be an annual certification for that as well. Until construction's complete, there's actually another third section of this that says there'll be a third-party liaison. They'll be inspecting and making sure that the construction's being dealt with properly, that we're following our budget and that certain expenditures that are coming to the town for reimbursement are paid properly. So you'll know that all along the way.
I grew up in an onion, so I get it. You're third onion Ellen now that you're?
Only an onion.
Yes. And it, it's similar, it's similar to Choice that did SB two or SB one. They came in with similar requests to this board and that we would have an additional, an initial budget, that we would go to get our CPA funds. They would have to come back and ask for further funds or different expenditures or cover different expenditures that we didn't think we would have to cover upfront. All of that's a continuing conversation until construction's completed. It evolves.
Any other questions? And you're all set with us?
Yes, I think I have direction. I think between me, Kristen and Katie, we can be back here and at your November meeting and hopefully have final documents for your execution.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
November 14th.
Thank you.
Next up is board reports and updates. I guess given the lateness of the hour, I'll suggest that we take up the issue of whether or not a, a study committee for forms of government is something that we, we put that next agenda. And in between now and then, if it's not obvious, if we could get the last report.
It's in your inbox.
It is. You're like a mind reader.
The last report.
The 2008 study committee.
We did the same study in 2008.
I sent it to you earlier this week.
So I just wanna read that.
Did you send it earl?
No, I sent it to Chris earlier this week in another chain, but I just sent it to you during the meeting.
Can we, can we put that on like, I don't know, maybe the town meeting section of the website? Just so it's a little bit easier for people to find.
Which one are you talking about?
So we're talking about the study committee for various forms of government?
Oh, represented town meeting?
Yeah, we do. And so I.
Oh, yeah.
So Kristen, you know, read my mind or was way ahead of me and so we have that in our inbox. We can read that and then maybe we'll have that on our next meeting agenda to talk about whether or not we want to panel such a thing. Okay. Next up, consent agenda. Request to approve the following: Town common banstand permit. The event is the nativity display. Applicant is Kelly Olson and the date is November 27th through January 4th.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Request to approve change of directors for alcohol club license for the VFW Manawana Key Post. 6539, 67 West Prescott Street.
Is everything in order, Patty?
Everything is in order. You may remember a couple of weeks ago, you approved their manager. When we sent the manager in, they said, wait, the directors aren't all up to date. So they were with the state, but not with the ABCC. So this isn't what we're doing. It's kind of a housekeeping.
Okay.
We just need your approval. Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Town manager's report.
Great. Happy to report that the town has received an executive office of public safety, municipal road safety grant in the amount of $34,274 as requested by the police department.
Excellent.
Contracts we're gonna skip over, so I'll move to purchase orders and then we can approve grants and purchase orders if you're comfortable with that. Purchase orders: Nishoba Technical High School for materials and labor to construct dugouts at the VFW Forge Baseball Field in the amount of no more than $26,931 as requested by the public works department. My understanding is that the town pays the materials costs and the little bidder came in with that and then we pay a percentage of an administrative fee to the school. United Construction and Forestry for repair cost to skid stair loader in the amount of $16,052.40 as requested by the public works department. I reviewed this matter with public works last week and I believe the cost to purchase new is four times this. So we feel that the repairs are a better value at this point in time. And then Boundtree Medical LLC for medical supplies used by the paramedics and EMTs and the fire and ambulance apparatus in the amount of $30,000 as requested by the fire department.
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Correspondence?
Move to waive reading of correspondence.
Second.
All in favor? Alotating a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All right. Thank you. Thank you, Westford. Have a good night.